Called meeting the order for Wycomico County Council, May 21st, 2024 legislative session. Entertaining a motion from council to convene in closed work session?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. The legislative session will now reconvene in a closed work session. We are beginning the county council meeting legislative session 2024-11, May 21st, 2024. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and pledge allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven, and give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. This is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of our covenant. Amen.
With whose allegiance you will fight, and with whose faith you will serve, one nation under God, in his name we will worship.
If you can make sure your cell phones are silent or off, we'd really appreciate that. Thank you. Entertaining motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved. First item we have on the agenda, we have a proclamation to recognize Mr. James McCroby for receiving the 2024 Velma Clark Excellence in Teaching about Agriculture Award. Councilman Josh Hastings is going to be presenting it.
So very excited about this award. I've spent a lot of time with MAF over the years, former executive director. So, all right, so today we have James McCroby to the 2024 Velma Clark Excellence in Teaching about Agriculture Award, whereas the Maryland Agriculture Education Foundation, that's the Ag tags if you guys have those, they have selected James McCroby as the teacher at Salisbury Middle School for the 2024 Velma Clark Excellence in Teaching about Ag Award, which honors a Maryland teacher who exemplifies excellence in using agriculture as a context to engage students in learning in core subjects. Whereas Mr. McCroby, who teaches social studies and geographical sciences, has demonstrated a strong commitment to integrating agricultural topics into the classroom. His innovative programs, methods, and activities have had a significant impact on student attitudes and overall learning. Whereas one of his key elements of his curriculum is the integration of hands-on experiences. His classroom features a school garden, edible organic vegetable or herbs, edible fruit trees, plants, pollinator garden, a composting area, a wetland palm demonstration, a pocket meadow demonstration, all in the opportunity to engage in research projects. Where his curriculum also includes a focus on the impact of agriculture throughout history through project-based learning and inquiry-based lessons. Students develop critical thinking skills and learning about agriculture and sustainability issues. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council celebrates James McCroby for his receiving the 2024 Velma Clark Excellence in Teaching about Agriculture Award and thank him for his dedication to the students and to the contribution to our community done this 21st day of May, signed by the entire county council. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Just say I want to thank you for recognizing me for this award.
I can't do any of the work that this award represents without all of the students that I have in the program that I teach at Salisbury Middle School, and it also includes my teammates that support me each and every day in integrating agriculture in my classroom. Thank you.
And by the way, your teammates are no slouches themselves. That Mr. Dr. Pavlovich, Keith Simkins, or Ms. Serini, so many more, very good friends of mine, really awesome pillars of our society. So, thank you very much. Let's take a picture.
Hold on, gentlemen.
You want to say a few words?
We now have a proclamation to recognize National Police Week. We have Captain Weersberg, Captain Wagner, and Lieutenant Alessandrine with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Department. You only have one. There's, we got them all here. Gentlemen, how are y'all?
What'd they do, hide you in the back? Yes. Morning, sir. Sir, how are you?
Morning, everybody. It is my honor to present this proclamation for National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which have been guaranteed by the Constitution to all citizens, and whereas it is important that people know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of police departments and that law enforcement officers recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the county executive hereby designate the week, May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week in Wycomico County and urge all citizens to pay tribute to our law enforcement officers done this 21st day of May 2024. Congratulations.
On behalf of the sheriff's office, we would like to thank you all for the proclamation for National Police Week. Fortunately, we have several other members of the sheriff's office in the hallway, but due to the large crowd, we couldn't get everybody in here. But we appreciate the support and we look forward to the continuation of support, especially with the upcoming resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pictures or didn't happen?
Next, we have a proclamation to proclaim Wycomico County to be a sanctuary for the Constitution of the United States and the entire Bill of Rights. Captain Weersberg, Captain Wagner, and Lieutenant Alessandrine will also be here as recipients.
All right, we have a proclamation here for, well, this is from the seven members of the council of Wycomico County that executed the oath of office, and whereas that the solemn date we swore to bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution of the United States and laws thereof, and to the best of our skills and judgment diligently and faithfully without partiality and prejudice, execute the oath, the office of the Wycomico County Council according to the Constitution and laws of this state. Now therefore, we, the county council of Wycomico County, Maryland reaffirm our oath and proclaim Wycomico County to be a sanctuary for the Constitution of the United States and the Bill of Rights, done this day, 21st day, May 2024. And here we have the proclamation. Thank you.
Thanks for having me back, but we appreciate this. As I think everybody knows, that law enforcement, not just the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, take the Constitution Bill of Rights very seriously, and we thank you for recognizing that fact here in the county. Thank you very much.
Thanks again. Next, we have a proclamation to recognize National Public Works Week. Mr. Michael Sfaby, the deputy director of public works, is here to receive the proclamation. There he is.
Come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is a proclamation for National Public Works Week, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Wycomico County. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the county executive hereby designate the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week in Wycomico County, and urge all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life.
The American Public Works Association identified the 19th of May through the 25th of May as National Public Works Week, carrying the theme as advancing the quality of life for all. Recognition always feels good, but it's good to discuss a theme so that we remember how to align ourselves, and it gives us the proper motivation to pursue what we do. To sort of remind us why we're all here, why we make this commitment of time, effort, and dollars. Advancing the quality of life for all is a meaningful but lofty goal. Anyone involved in the profession would tell you it takes more than a 40-hour week, five days a week, less holidays, to do that, to advance the quality of life for all. I've often heard it's not a full-time job, it's an all-time job. All of us do what we do for the good of the public. With this pursuit comes a few burdens, but the satisfaction of knowing as a public servant that you've provided the best resources and services to the public makes the challenges worthwhile. In each of our own lives, we all have commitments to ourselves, faith, family, employers, and so on. The commitment and opportunity to serve others will always be a privilege. Recognition is merely icing on that cake. To the council and administration, on behalf of public works team that consists of engineering, roads, and solid waste, it's my honor to accept this recognition of service for successes in Wycomico County, but even more, it's a privilege to work with this team and contribute to them. Thank you.
Mr. Sfaby is a new employee with Wycomico County, not even a year, correct?
Correct.
You're doing excellent work for us. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a proclamation to recognize National EMS Week. Mr. Lorenzo Cropper, Director of Emergency Services, is here to receive the proclamation. Mr. Cropper, going to do it over next to Shaney there? Yep, bring whoever you choose. Morning to you.
Morning. It gives me great pleasure to do this because I am an emergency, if anybody knows the TV show Emergency. So I look at that and I wonder if our guys do the same thing. This proclamation is to 2024 National EMS Week, whereas the emergency medical services are a vital public service and that the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services fills a gap by providing adequate hospital care, including preventative medicine and follow-up care, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, and nurses, and whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams, whether the career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to answer their lifesaving skills. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council and the county executive hereby proclaim May 19th through May 25th, 2024, as National EMS Week, done this 21st day of May 24th, and all the council members sign this proclamation. Congratulations.
Any comments?
Thank you on behalf of all the EMS providers in the county.
Appreciate it. Thank you. After we're done with the proclamations, we'll probably clear the room. It's a lot of proclamations. But this is the final proclamation, to recognize Children's Mental Health Matters Week. The Life Crisis Center is the recipient. Good morning, how are you?
So the book I'm currently reading, or listening to, I'm actually dyslexic, literally, is Jonathan Hates the Anxious Generation, but it basically focuses on the current youngest generation and their mental wellness and the causes therein. So this is a particularly, I think, important topic. So Children's Mental Health Week matters, whereas mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter. Whereas the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one of, says one of the five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition, one in five. Whereas research has shown that early identification and treatment of mental health disorders among children provides better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. Whereas children and youth in mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to services and support, and also benefit from the integration of behavioral health and primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas it's important that families and communities learn about the warning signs of mental health disorders and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the county executive hereby proclaim this week, beginning May 5th, as Children's Mental Health Matters Week, and call upon all citizens to observe this week in an effort to raise awareness of children's mental health, done this 21st day of May, signed by the entire county council. Would you like to introduce yourself and say a couple words?
Good morning, my name is Meg Cohen from Life Crisis Center, and on behalf of Life Crisis Center, I just want to thank you all for your consistent recognition of the work that we do. We are able to do the work that we do, and we are as strong as we are because of the community that surrounds us. Thank you for acknowledging the importance of children's mental health, and also thank you for wrapping yourselves around those children.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is Resolution Number 48-2024. This is evidencing the intent of the county council to appropriate funds and implement the collective bargaining agreement between Wycomico County, Maryland, the Office of the Sheriff's, the Office of the Sheriff of Wycomico County, and the Wycomico County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 111. Before you, we have Ms. Cheryl Brown, who is our collective bargaining attorney, and Mr. Paul Wilbur, who is our county attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 48-2024?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second, and discussion. Good evening, or good afternoon, or morning, how are you? I should know that, we already spent an hour and a half in a closed session. We have motion second, any discussion from council, any questions?
We're not completely done negotiating right now, so would we put this on the table? And how would we go about that right now?
The council has to make a decision by today, by this council meeting.
Okay.
Yes, either for or against.
Okay.
It's required. Any other comments or questions from the council? Joe?
Well, I guess, you know, we've been meeting about this, and I think the reservation I have, in talking to other council members, is we haven't been provided the information that we need to make a decision on one portion of this agreement. So I would say that we need to say no to this until we get that information.
Any other council members?
Are you still going to give a brief synopsis?
Mr. Cannon, can I just address that comment?
Yes.
Because I just want to make sure that, at the request of council, we did provide the actuary from the finance office, and that was supported by C-Biz, or actually conducted by C-Biz, performed by C-Biz, and we did provide that information to the council.
It was, it was, we haven't seen that. We haven't had that from C-Biz?
The documents, those were, they were done by C-Biz.
For the nine officers?
Yes.
I don't know that I've seen that.
That was explained by Pam when she was here.
I don't know that I've seen that.
I haven't seen that either.
No.
So I guess we're still waiting on?
That wasn't explained.
That wasn't ever said.
Pam, you can sit down.
I think it's for clarification, especially for the deputies here, and then for the FOP as well. The council is very pro-law enforcement, without a doubt. We'd like to see how we can accommodate the FOP to the fullest extent, but we do feel that we have had some concerns over the proper amount of information, the proper amount of time that the council has had to read this information and actually take it in and to make a legitimate decision. With that being in mind, I think the temperament of the council is that there is a huge concern that the COLA that's being requested, the 2.5 COLA, that is being requested by the deputies, possibly is not sustainable by the county, for the county. We don't know if it's sustainable for the deputies. There's a concern that we have that should there be a mass exodus of retired officers, there would be a vacancy in the police force, but we recognize that that can be a normal trend. But the problem that we're having with this is that whether or not this is sustainable, to continue with the 2.5 COLA, and the burden that this might place on the deputies. If the deputies find out in two years or three years that all of a sudden their contribution is going to double or triple, we have a concern with that, because not only is that going to be short, you know, shorting them of their income, it also could be very detrimental, and it could be a deterrent, and they could decide that they, that they might choose to resign, and we may find ourselves with even less of a police force than we had before. So we're just trying to make sure to the fullest extent that this will be the best measures that we can take to have a solidified police force and a sustainable financial structure in place so that we can move forward with what the requests are. At this time, I think there are some members of the council that are not comfortable with that.
And I recognize the concerns respectfully. A lot of what you commented on, I can't discuss out of privileged information, and since we're in closed session, I can't, I mean, open session, I can't comment on that. But the CBA was negotiated in good faith with both parties, and both parties are well-informed of what the terms of the agreement are, and in fact, the FOP has ratified it to a vote. And Pam is here to address the question, I believe, that Mr. Holloway had about the actuary.
So the information that was provided to council was based on actuarial analysis of nine specific employees, so not created by finance, created by the actuaries, and then from there was taken and added the parameters of the two and a half percent. Based on that information, we then inflated that to be 20 officers, based on averages, and over a period of two, five, and 10 years. And that information shows that there is sufficient funds to cover this contract for two, five, and 10 years, if it stays as it is. This contract is a two-year contract. It is financially feasible for two years. As every contract we come before you, we can't predict past the two years as to where salaries, benefits, or any of that is. The finance department and administration believe this is a financially feasible and appropriate thing to provide our employees of the FOP.
Why are we just hearing right?
Because I stated this before.
Wait a minute, you said today, that, you just said a minute ago, that you inflated these numbers to show that they worked. We have asked for an actuary of the numbers for the full 10 years, and you're saying you inflated these numbers that you got from the actuary?
I can multiply two and a half percent times an actuary.
That's not what we asked for.
Joe, can I finish for a minute? Has any member on this council heard that the evidence that was, or not evidence, but the information that was provided to us that come from an actuary and come from C-Biz?
No.
No. And I think if we voted?
And was that actually on the document, that it came from them?
I think if we voted right now to open up the closed meeting that was held just an hour ago, the citizens would be very interested in hearing what was said at that table.
We haven't misstated anything.
I said they were based on actuaries.
Actuaries.
In the previous session.
I've never heard, I've never heard it stated that it was from C-Biz.
I have preached and preached.
I can't help that you did not hear the word actuaries when I stated it. I can't help that.
You can't help when I look at you and say, Pam, I need an actuary.
And I said, these were provided, this was created by nine actuaries. How else am I supposed to state that?
Well, nobody else here is saying that they heard you ever communicate that.
Well, again, I stated that in this, I'm breaking closed session. I stated that to the council.
Well, I'm not breaking closed session, and I've made this clear to many people prior to this meeting today. I support a COLA for the Sheriff's Department, but we need the information produced to us so that we can make a fiscal, responsible decision, and if those numbers don't add up, then we deal with it, and we figure out how to make it work, or if it can't work. But you can't give us something and say, here, sign off on this at the taxpayer's expense. We represent not just the sheriff's office, but the whole county. I don't have the information that I need to make a decision, you know, and I'm in law enforcement. I know how important a COLA is, but I cannot, I cannot sign off on a COLA without having the information that I need to be able to tell the public why I did what I did.
Josh?
Yeah, just, so I guess, first of all, we're very, it seems to be that we're very close. I appreciate that, all your hard work in negotiating, just trying to come to an agreement.
Thank you.
We are, as you say, we're, you know, the challenge is we're pushed up against a tight deadline. It'd be better if we were at this point three months ago, but we weren't. So I guess what we really need here, just quite simply, is we just need extra, I think seems to be a little bit extra time, which seems to be what we don't have. So I guess- So I guess the only thing that we need is basically a slight bit more time for a slight bit more data. As you know, the, the legislative branch holds the purse. It's one thing for the exactly, executive branch to be able to say, this is where we want the budget to go, but at the end of the day, all of us are accountable for making sure that every dollar spent makes sense and it's efficient, and that we, we are financially stable going forward. So I think we're, the only thing that we require is just a little bit more time to be able to have that simple data, and then let's go forward all together, hands held together, and make sure that we've got it.
Thank you, one second. Thank you, Mr. Hastings, for recognizing that, and I think we are all in agreement that we want what's in the best interest of the county, as well as with the FOP, in recognition of that. Through these negotiations, we've worked very hard with the FOP to reach that. The actuaries and the numbers, the county executive has always made sure that any CBA that's approved works with the budget, and out of respect for the council and their concerns, we went back and provided additional information to address those concerns.
On May 13th, the executive forward sent an email to all council members that stated that based on a sample of retirees and their actual actuarial calculations, this assumes all 20 will retire in 2025. So you got it in writing also, that these were based on actuarial, it's to all county council members.
I heard what you said. I didn't hear anything in there saying that that came from an outside actual-
And it said, see, how else did I get an actuarial calculation, because I'm not an actuary?
When we have brought it up time and time again, how come you never said-
And that email also said C-Biz, C-Biz in the email.
I think just what could be helpful in the future, to be able to say, okay, here's a printout from this data.
I'm not, I'm not giving, I'm not giving you information that is a specific employee. It's not happening.
No, no, I mean, for an average, or something like that, where, where the council could say, okay, we see that this is an outside agreement. And right now, you could say, okay, we've got a couple of numbers in an Excel spreadsheet. It could be something that we came up with, it could be something that comes from outside, but we are to trust that it came from a reputable source. But it might be, I think in the future, or pardon me, in the past, what we have had would be actual printouts to say, okay, here's from a third party, it's trustworthy information, and this is, this is not a sample size, but a, a larger understanding. So I think that's where we're, we're just waiting for that larger understanding, to make sure that we can confidently have a path forward. And I don't want to misspeak.
It, it's tough to sit up here, to have the council doubt the abilities of your finance director, to literally say that you think I'm lying to you, when I have yet to be proven to have lied to you ever. It is very, very frustrating to sit here and look at seven people and have them doubt my abilities, and doubt the fact that I am telling you the truth.
We're not calling you on this one.
Oh, no. John, I have the, you gave me the floor, it is now my turn.
Go ahead.
You make this job incredibly difficult, because you do not trust the employees that you have. I am a 30-year professional with a CPA, and to sit here and listen to seven people doubt my abilities, say I can't calculate from an actuary 2.5% growth, yes, you did.
I did not. I did not.
You did not say, you said that I couldn't calculate, well, you, a calc, this isn't from an actuary, I can multiply 2.5% times an actual actuary. I am that good.
You know what we asked for today.
And I also know that we told you that we could not provide that in the timeframe that we did, but we did provide you actuaries. And I used the best of my abilities to provide you the information that you requested, and to sit here and listen to you doubt my abilities and say that I am not doing my job, it is a very hard thing to take.
Ms. Owen, we're not-
Because I am 30 years in this profession and a CPA.
Ms. Owen, we're not doubting your job, it's just that the council members have stated on more than one occasion that they would like to see a professional actuary give us the totals that we're requesting. It's important for this county, and it's important for the deputies. And that really is the cause of it.
And the numbers were provided. I mean, we did provide those numbers to the best of our ability in the timeframe that we had. So it's up to the council as to how they want to use that information.
A lot of it is new information just right now.
The numbers, the numbers have not changed.
I, I would like to speak for a few seconds. So, we're in a little bit of a pickle, so, we all want this to work.
Absolutely.
Right? I just want everyone that's watching-
Absolutely.
-know that we all want this to work. I see the email that was sent to me, I see where it says, after analyzing actual data from C-Biz, comma, we feel confident it is proposed for the 2025 CBA. I see that. I don't know if everyone else, maybe we, maybe we just need another session so we can talk again, so we can get this cleaned up. So obviously, we can't vote to pass it, because there's, there's, not everyone is comfortable with making this decision right now. Now, we want to make this decision, but we're not all comfortable. So to get comfortable, I think, would be to have another meeting with you all, and in closed doors, so that we can see all of this again, just so we're all on the same page, so when we come back up here, we can say, let's do it, okay? I think we have to make a vote yes or no today, because it's in the resolution, so we have to vote, obviously, it's going to have to be a no, because we need to re, come back, because we have till July fif, 17th, 15th? Was it July 15th?
June, June.
June.
15th is the budget.
So we have, right, so we have a little bit of time to get this right. So I, I, that's my suggestion, is that we just, I, I don't know if we can table it, but if we just, if we table it, or we vote no temporarily, and put it back on the agenda to come back together, and that we can iron this out, and everyone can be comfortable with making a decision. Because I don't want any of these council members up here feeling uncomfortable about making a financial decision that could impact us in the long term. And I'm fine with waiting.
And I don't know where the nine came from. If we have 30 deputies that are going to be eligible to retire prior to this contract ending, what I ask for, to you and to the executive, can you have C-Biz come in with an actuary, show us the data, that if it's solvable, responsible, doable, and if it's not, then we figure out how to make it work so that it is? And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, you both said that's not going to happen. Now, was that what was said or not? If I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
It is very difficult to get a full actuarial analysis in the timeframe you're requesting. We-
But you have handed us this to us, and I, I want the people to know, because it's always, it seems like a lot of times, it's us against the executive, or the executive against us. We are handed a document in the 11th hour. Here you go, sign off on this and make a decision. Well, I'm not going to rubber stamp anything. I, I told you, I am in law enforcement, I know how important a COLA is, and I want the guys to have it. But I have to ensure, when people in the public ask me, hey, why did you do that? Is it affordable? Is the county going to be able to afford it 10 years from now, 15? I want to be able to justify what I'm doing.
I answered in closed session how we got those nine. The fact that council was not, did not register that answer, I can't go further.
But, Mr. President, it might be helpful, to the public at least, to explain the timeframe.
Yes, I think so.
So, Wacomiko County voters amended the county charter to provide or allow for collective bargaining. When they amended the charter, in that charter amendment, they included language that said that the county council was to adopt an ordinance, or a code section, on collective bargaining. The county council adopted subsection 59 of the county code, which is on collective bargaining. I would note that the section that the county council adopted is substantially similar to the one in Montgomery County, and my guess is that the language that's in here is probably substantially similar to most, if not all, the counties that have collective bargaining. So the language that the county council used, and, and is in the county code, is not unique to Wacomiko County, or not substantially unique, it's substantially similar to other counties. In that, in that county code section, there is a provision that specifically says that the county executive is, should, that the county executive and the FOP are to negotiate, and that if, if a agreement is not reached by February 1st, that either party can declare an impasse. It then says that the county executive is encouraged or, or to reach an agreement on the, on the collective bargaining agreement by March 1st, and that the county executive is required to submit the collective bargaining agreement to the county council on April 1st. If the county executive does not submit the county collective bargaining agreement to the county council by April 1st, she is mandated to provide an explanation as to why the collective bargaining agreement has not been reached, agreement has not been reached, and provide an estimate as to when it's going to be done. And then the, the code section mandates that the county council approve or disapprove the collective bargaining agreement by May 1st. If they don't do it by May 1st, there is a provision that allows the county council to extend that to May 15th. And then the county, there is language in there that adds approximately 10 days to the May 15th, for the county council to either approve or disapprove the collective bargaining agreement. So we have basically until May 25th. The reality is that the county executive did not provide the county council with the proposed collective bargaining agreement by April 1st, nor did the county, county executive provide any information to the county council with regard to the status of the collect, of the bargaining, or the likely conclusion of that bargaining. The county council recognized that there was a timeframe problem, and that they had a May 1st deadline. In late April, the county council held a special session, and at that special session, the county council voted to extend the time period from May 1st to May 15th to make a decision on this. The county council president notified the county executive's office that the resolution would be, the account, collective bargaining agreement would be considered on, in a closed work session on May 7th, and that in order for the county council to have a closed work session on it, it had to have the collective bargaining agreement to review by no later than the previous Friday. So if it's May 7th, I think that's May 3rd. The county council, county executive sent a draft copy of the collective bargaining agreement to the county council on April 30th for the first time. The count, the draft that was sent was not complete, and it was resent on, on May 2nd, which is one day after the county council theoretically is required to have approved it. The, the, held, you then held a closed work session on May 7th, and during that closed work session, I think the council made it clear that they, they needed to have an actuarial numbers in order to make a decision, and requested that they get an actuarial in numbers.
Right.
And there was a closed work session again this morning. Apparently, there's a misunderstanding as to what information was provided to the council, because I understood that the council made it clear that they wanted an outside actuarial to do it, and at least my interpretation was that the information that was provided was not, was provided from the finance director office, not from an outside actuarial. That may have been a misunderstanding, but that's certainly what I understood this morning. I assume that's consistent with what the council understood. So we're now here now. The council has a May 25th deadline that's been extended from May 1st-
Right.
-under its own code section. It has mandated to make a decision on or before May 25th. So the decision today is whether you vote to approve or disapprove today, or you're going to have to hold a special session between now and May 25th to, to make a final decision. But I don't believe the council has any right, under the county code, to extend this decision beyond May 25th.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Mr. Cannon, can I just respond-
Yes.
-to Mr. Benson? And while I recognize that, you know, we've been in communications for a number of weeks with regard to this, and the council has, under its authority, extended the timeframe, that the negotiations with the FOP were continued in good faith, and none of the parties implemented an impasse. So we continued in good faith during negotiations. The county executive office, as the exclusive bargaining representative, we should not, during collective bargaining negotiations, and in good faith, disclose any of those negotiations at that time, because those negotiations are protected. And so during that time period, we worked as diligently and respectfully with the FOP to get that collective bargaining, and made sure that the proposed, at the April 15th date, that they issued a proposed wage scale, to at least consider that as part of the budget. Again, recognizing that all of this was done in accordance with managing the budget of the county, and hoping that the council would approve that at the end. Recognizing the concerns that the council had, we did perform, or at least, excuse me, I misspoke, I didn't perform, you know, with the actuaries, and then the Department of Finance, looking at those actuaries, provide that additional information. But yes, the deadlines were extended, we worked together to make sure that we got to this point, and answer those concerns, because we all want to make sure, to Mr. Wynn's point, that we are together in approving the CBA. Thank you.
Any other comments?
The, the, thank you, Mr. Benson, for making the public aware of the timeline. Once again, the council received this information at the 11th hour, to, to your point. I understand a request was made back in September to start the negotiations, and the answer was January. That's four months. Why they weren't started earlier, I don't know. I don't have skin in that game. But when we know something like this is coming up, and we've proposed a 2.5% COLA, which is brand-new to everybody, it appears that not all the research was done before it was presented. I'm not sure if the public is aware, but our county pension system, Pam, if I'm not correct, is funded at 60 or 70% right now?
60.6%. About 67%, if I remember correctly. But the, you have to understand, that is a point in time at June 30th, 2023, assuming that we closed down the pension on June 30th, 2023, that we did not have enough funds to pay everybody out on June 30th, 2023.
I understand. But a program like this, again, it's brand-new, we want to make sure that when we jump off the diving board, that there's water in the pool below us, and that we can sustain this. All we need is the information.
And we have provided that. We continually provide that.
I fully disagree.
Because we would not negotiate without making sure that this was sustainable. And Pam has answered the questions to make sure that we look at those numbers, because that's, because I understand the concerns.
For the record, I'm all for COLA.
Thank you.
100%.
Thank you.
I actually think all the county employees should get one, not just the sheriff's office, but that's a whole, that's a discussion for another day. But I, but I think we need more information.
What did everyone think about having a special session?
I'm good with it. We need to have a special session if we don't have the numbers back, though.
We will not have anything additional than what you have in front of you by 25th.
Yeah. I think, I think what I'm saying is, I think a few more, I think we need more time to digest-
Based on what Mr. Benson is saying, he will, he says there's no more time.
Yeah, but nobody's at an impasse.
Benson's not saying it, that's what the county code says.
Right. Well, the county code's saying that, but nobody's at an impasse, and I have no intention of being in an impasse. But since no one's at an impasse-
Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
-why can't we have a special session if, like, it may say that in the charter, and that's to get us moving, right? But I, I, I'm, I'm for having another session on this, so that everyone has time to make sure we understand what was sent to us.
What was the date?
That would be within, that would be-
I sent, I emailed it to you.
May 13th.
I emailed it to you.
That would be within the next three days, and they've acknowledged the fact that they will not have any more additional information within the next three days.
What I mean is, some of the information that's sent to us, not everybody, I guess, realized that, I didn't realize that it was done by C-Biz. After, it says, after analyzing actuary data from C-Biz, so she analyzed the data from C-Biz, they feel confident with this proposal, and I just want us all to digest- And I just want us all to digest this a little bit more before, you know, I mean, we've got to, we've got to either have a special session or what's the alternative?
May I?
Yes.
I think that Pam is a good financial officer. I've worked with her before. The problem is the timing. When you have to read a document as important as that, you can't just have it thrown at you, because you really have to read line by line, like I did. I read line by line the first draft, because I found a typo, and we still got it in this one, the corrective copy, it's a typo. So I have a problem with the COLA, and the reason why I have a problem with the COLA is that the sheriff deputies that retire prior to this, this retirement plan for COLA, they won't get COLA. They're left out. So I have a problem with that, because I defend employees. So there may be a reason, there may be a cost. I don't have the opportunity to ask that question. What would be the cost to give all the deputies a COLA? What would be the cost to giving all the county employees a COLA? But if we had this document early, and like it was supposed to be done, some of those questions could be asked, answered, prior to this meeting. And that's all we're asking. I did not hear that today, that we had an outside actuary. I didn't, I didn't hear that. I heard Shane request it. I didn't hear about that it was done outside of the, of the county office. I didn't, I didn't hear that. It's not, I'm saying it's not true, but I didn't hear it. And I think we, it's, it's, the people standing here, the, the people that did the collective bargaining, they want to answer, they want to see it approved, they want us to move on, but, but the lack of getting it to us on time is one of the main reasons why it's a stall. I support the FOP, but we have to have certain things answered. And since we weren't part of the bargaining, and we couldn't ask the questions, you know, because we weren't part of it, that's where we're lost, you know?
There's, there's several deputies standing in the room, and I'm going to say this for their benefit. Here, here, anybody who wants to see this email can see it. So I requested, along with the other people up here, to have an actuary done by the company that we use, CBIZ, because Mrs. Owen is not an actuary, ware list, or however you say that word. That was my request. Added to that request was, we got 30 deputies, from my understanding, sitting on deck that can retire. Should be pretty easy for an actuary person to figure out if what we're going to do is sustainable or not. Ms. Owen's saying, well, you got an email from CBIZ stating, or an email from CBIZ. The document that I have here doesn't have CBIZ on it anywhere. It just says in the notes, "Good afternoon. After analyzing actuarial data from CBIZ, we feel confident in what's proposed for the 2025 CBA." But if you open the document, it doesn't say completed by CBIZ, nothing. If anybody would like to see that after this meeting, come see me, because there's a lot of miscommunication that keeps getting put out there.
In the rest of that email, it says that nine actuarially created were used. So you read the first two lines, read the rest of the email.
Again, anybody can look at it that they want. That was not, was any of that done, that document, or did anybody from CBIZ type that?
They're not going to email you directly. They're not.
No, but they're going to email you documents that we requested, and you can forward them?
No, I'm not giving you nine actuaries of individual employees. That's not happening.
Cross their name out.
No!
I think that, I think we need to wrap it up. I think it's more than clear that, the real genesis of this is the fact that unfortunately, the process was delayed from the very beginning. If you don't think the process was delayed beginning, you have to ask yourself why the County Council had to schedule an 8:30 this morning, a closed session at 8:30 this morning, to try to continue to evaluate the data and what the concerns may or may not be. But that's, that's how close this deadline was pushed for this Council to make, you know, an educated decision on this matter. So we've done that, we did that. It was from 8:30 to 10 o'clock. There's still some concerns on the part of the Council. I think it's time that we moved on and took this resolution to a vote. But keep in mind, as has been stated before, this is nothing to do, this is no reflection on the FOP or the Executive, or, it's just simply a matter of the fact that the Council thinks it needs to take the interest of the public at heart, as well as the FOP, to make sure this is the best decision on behalf of everyone. So with that being said, we have a motion to second already before discussion. All those in favor of approving Resolution 48-2024, say aye. Yes.
Need to make sure, if you approve this resolution, you're approving the CBA.
Right, exactly.
So, just to make.
And if we don't approve it, we recognize the fact that we'll have to be going into further negotiations with a representative from the Council, correct? Right, it's not the end all.
Well, not further negotiations with the Council, further negotiations with the Executive and the FOP.
With the FOP.
Correct.
Yeah, the FOP, the Executive and a representative from the Council.
Not further negotiations. The Council would advise the parties as to the reasons that they are not voting on, or not voting to implement the CBA, and then advising the parties, the Executive Office and the FOP, to continue negotiations.
Okay, but it's, I think what we're trying to stress is that it's not an end all.
Correct.
At this point in time.
Correct.
It's just the fact that we feel that more discussions have to be.
John, can you clear up something? Does that explanation have to be provided at this moment, or can, does it need to be provided in a letter at a later date, like tomorrow or this afternoon?
Has to be provided today. Provided today.
At the meeting?
Yeah, as part of this.
Now, does that explanation have to be done by every Council member individually?
No, I don't believe so. I think it's part of the resolution. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Benson.
Per the resolution.
Per the resolution.
All right, okay.
Thank you for asking the question.
Okay, thank you.
Did I misunderstand you earlier on the negotiation process once?
There is a, there is a sentence in the, in the Code Section. It says that if you, if you don't implement the CBA or approve the CBA, "The Council shall designate a representative to meet with the parties and present the Council's views in their further negotiations." So the question is, what does it mean when it says, "Present the Council's views in their further negotiations"? I gather Ms. Brown's position is that that does not mean that the representative from the Council is permitted to meet with the FOP and Ms. Brown. That's not the way I read the sentence, but that's her position, as I understand it.
The definition of parties is the County Executive and the FOP to continue further negotiations.
I understand, that's not what the Code Section says. It says, "Shall present the Council's views in their further negotiations."
Absolutely. They have the opportunity to present their views to the parties as they continue their negotiations. And the hope is that we continue the good faith negotiations at the, when the Council expresses the concerns that they have with the CBA. And we would continue that negotiation.
Thank you. All those in favor of Resolution 48-2024, say aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Chair is opposed. Resolution 48-2024 does not pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Hurley.
Mr. President, did you want to?
Oh yeah, sorry. Yeah, thank you very much. You told me about it 100 times. I have to entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Bob Benson as the Council's Representative to meet with the parties. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 49-2024. This is authorizing the County Executive to apply for and accept a $50,000 grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and this is to conduct a housing study for the county. And we have Mr. Gary Pusey here, who is the Planning Manager. I also state that a public hearing notice was published in the local newspaper and posted on the county's website, stating that a public hearing will be held this morning at 10:00 a.m. That's for this resolution, as well as the other public hearings that are on the agenda this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 49-2024 in reference to a $50,000 grant from Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this particular resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 49-2024. I entertain a motion from Council to approve Resolution 49-2024. Second discussion.
I have a question. It's an easy one. Nothing difficult.
Morning, Mr. Pusey.
I can handle it.
Good morning.
I looked at the grant, and I saw that the house was low and moderate income. Are you taking consideration the blighted areas in the county? I have, and the reason why I say that, I have two areas that are in my district, or three, really. The Westover Hill, it has boarded up houses that could be renovated where people live in. There's Patrick Avenue, and then there's Newport Circle. Those three, if the person that does the grant, the consultant, I think they should be included in that, and I didn't know if that was going to be included, the whole housing situation.
So this is going to be a very comprehensive housing study. We last did one in 2007, so it's been 17 years. It would be an inventory of the housing conditions throughout the county, and also an analysis of funding programs that are out there to improve housing. We've had some, some initial consultations with the Department of Housing and Community Development, and we put the low and moderate income in there, because that is a requirement through DHCD to get the grant. But they, they have off record discussed with us possibly looking at blighted properties and how we can convert them.
Because there is funding for that.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure they weren't left out.
Yeah, so the study would be the first part, and then we would look at implementing the recommendations of that study, and I'm sure that blighted conditions and dilapidated housing will be a big part of that study. Yes.
Any other questions? No? All those in favor of Resolution 49-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Pusey.
Thank you, Speaker.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 50-2024.
This is to authorize the County Executive to enter into a lease in letter of intent for the exchange of 909 South Shoemaker Drive, Salisbury, Maryland, known as the former Ward Museum. We do have Mr. Seth Hirschberger here, Executive Director of the Wycomico Public Libraries, and we have several representatives from Salisbury University.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 50-2024. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county residence, and your concern. One thing I neglected to mention earlier is that there is the three-minute time limit based on that huge screen on the wall, and we would ask that you try not to repeat what somebody else may have said, just as a matter of time and appreciation for everyone else's time in the room. Good morning.
Morning. My name's Phil Atkins. I was a docent volunteer at the Ward Museum since 1997. We would like to propose an alternative to Salisbury's idea of returning this or turning the museum into a library. As a, our proposal, there's a group of us who have gotten together on this, is that we have a newly reconstituted Board of Directors for the Wildfowl Art Museum, not known as the Ward Museum, because the Ward Foundation Board of Trustees divorced themselves from any idea that they were going to be part of this. We have over a dozen highly respected community and business leaders who have agreed to serve on this new board, and we're asking that Salisbury, with their guidance and approval of these people, such as the executives of Polankas and Purdue Company, we would like to then have an interim Director of the new museum, and again, working with the new board. We have, we do have people who have committed, willing to commit money and grants in order to make the newly reconstituted museum financially sound. And if we could do that and get that in place and approval, now, this would take some time, obviously, then we would ask that Salisbury consider returning the building to the newly reconstituted group to bring back the Ward Museum, which would, could be known as the Salisbury Wildfowl Museum, or the Delmarva Peninsula, or whatever, but it would return a real jewel to this area, to a building that was not built and then became a museum. It was built specifically as a museum to house the wildfowl carvings that were in there. You're talking about over $18 million value of the carvings that were, now they're in containers, hidden somewhere at the university for the people never to see again. And let's not forget the educational aspect, which a close colleague of mine is going to mention. Where every year, thousands of students in this area came and learned about the heritage of this area and the carvings. You're talking about items that are, some are worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so we're just asking that this be a consideration for an alternative to the library.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to visit. My name is Philip Lebel. I'm one of the people who spoke a year ago before the Council, back on April 4th. I was an author of a petition to save the Ward Museum that had 5,600 signatures by the time I closed it this spring. I'm not here to rehash all of those points. I'm here to say, we need to ask ourselves some of the questions about what could be done. As Phil, my high school classmate, has very well stated, this building that is on Shoemaker Pond was designed as a wildfowl art museum. It was not designed to become a library, which it's now slated to be. There are a lot of expenses associated with that, meanwhile, without addressing what will happen to the collection that has now been presumably in those containers or dispersed. I have some larger questions on this, which is that we hear that the library would move from its downtown location to the Ward Museum, which would involve extensive renovations. We don't know what the amount of monies are for that, how much that would represent, but it's probably not going to be inconsequential. A second thing is that we're also told that were that to happen, you also would have the current building, which is the Sarbanes Library of Wycomico County, demolished that building, and there would be a $100 billion arts center constructed on that site. The library already has lost space, parking space, due to Unity Square. So what we have now is a further constraint. How would you handle an arts center for parking for people who would be there for certain events? I add to this that we already have performance centers. I won't go beyond by saying that Holloway Hall, for example, has been a wonderful site. I've attended many events there. We also have a civic center, which has been used to hold a number of events. So with those things, you have to ask yourself, how efficiently would that structure be used were it be, were it to be constructed as an arts center in the downtown? If it's $100 million, we are told that the university would serve as a fiduciary agent. The value of $100 million is roughly what the endowment of Salisbury University is, so it's not inconsequential. So there would have to be some funds elsewhere, and you have to ask yourself, what is the economic impact of that going to be? How do you rationalize all that? And saying all of this, I'm not against the library. I think it's a wonderful institution, just like I think the university is a wonderful institution. So I just ask a reconsideration of how we might rethink this issue so that we can make the best use of those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lebel.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Council. I'm Chip DeShiel. I'm a lifelong resident of Wycomico County and currently Chair of the Wycomico County Library Board of Trustees. I'm here to voice support for moving forward with the relocation of our downtown library to the former Ward Museum. This proposal envisions a library we can all be proud of, a place where we can expand our programs, where our patrons can feel safe, a space that is accessible and inviting, a place that encourages learning. a place that encourages learning in an environment that is inspiring and compatible with the culture of our eastern shore. As has been said many times, this is a win-win-win opportunity. A win for our county leadership, who want to see our community and its institutions grow and prosper for the benefit of all its residents. A win for our university, which continues to invest in our downtown in new and creative ways, and a particular win for our library, which deserves a facility that will significantly impact the residents of our city and county for generations to come. The level of collaboration on the part of all stakeholders associated with this proposal is absolutely unprecedented. It's a winning combination from every perspective, and equally important, it's being funded in a responsible and affordable way for our county. I'm asking this council to recognize the important opportunity that is before us and to move forward in approving this proposal and restoring our library to its central place in the life of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeShiel.
Hi, good morning. My name is Matt Drew. I live at 301 North Clermont in Salisbury. I'm a citizen of Wacomico County. I also have the honor of sitting on the Salisbury University Town Gown Council, and I'm a member of the Greater Salisbury Committee. In summary, my position is I fully support authorizing the council to move forward with an MOU that would allow the county executive to enter into this transaction. I think that the goal of redeveloping this property for the beneficial use of our community, for Wacomico County, for the citizens of Salisbury, and for the benefactors of Salisbury University is just absolutely huge. My suspicion is we're going to hear a lot of questions today. We've heard a few already that are really good questions about what are the needs of the community that need to be considered and reflected in this plan? And right now, we're at the very, very early inception stage, as I see it, of this project. I think approval of the memorandum of understanding should not be held until all questions are resolved. That would be improper, because this great idea would simply die on the vine. However, I do think there's a really important role for you as the county council to play in this. You should support this project moving forward, but you should also outline a set of checks and balances that allow you to check in with the project principals as this project proceeds, to make sure that the goals that we're talking about here today, you know, as the project proceeds forward, are still in line and in keeping with what's best for the community. I like to think of the process of developing a project like this as a very, very complex project, but if you think about all of the things, the options that are available to us right now, as if it were a funnel, and a funnel is very, very wide at the top, and then as you travel further and further down the funnel, the funnel narrows, and then there's only a small bit of material that gets out of the bottom of the funnel. Well, developing a very complex proposal like this, with developing two different properties with two different agencies, is very, very complex. There's going to be a lot of ideas that start off in the early stages that may or may not make it through to the final end product. I think your role is to make sure that at different stages, different levels in that funnel, you have a check-in with the project principals to make sure that the goals of the project are still in keeping. And if there are things that, at the very top level, we thought were a good idea, but we find out that they're not so feasible as you move farther down the funnel, let's keep those out, but let's have the kernel of the project be something that's successful and good for the whole community. So what I'd like to see is that you give the project principals the option to return to you on a periodic basis, and that can be to your decision about what is appropriate, to make sure that as the project moves forward, they check in, not just with you, but check in publicly to provide for transparency, to make sure that those questions are being answered by the stakeholders, before you allow the project to then proceed to the next step in the development process. And then the last thing I'll have, and I love this clock because it really keeps us all on task, is that there should be consideration in this MOU for having a Plan B for both the Ward Museum property, as well as the current library property, that if either of those are deemed to be not feasible to proceed from one step to the next step, what is going to happen to those properties? Because the last thing that any of us would want to have is a property that's vacant. So I support this MOU with those comments, and thank you for your time. And first, also, thank you for your service to our community. We really appreciate it, so take care.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
Good morning. My name is Jean Geriga. I'm a resident of Salisbury. When I first learned about today's meeting, my first impulse was not to attend, because the matter regarding closure of the Ward Museum of Wildfowl Art and the idea to move the library into the former museum building appears to be a fait accompli. However, I decided to participate today to offer my input as a former member, supporter, and donor to the Ward Museum. I wanted to start by reading a portion of a letter I wrote to the editor of the Salisbury Independent last month before the big reveal was announced. I thanked Laura Botenelli for her letter, "Make the Ward Museum a State Park," in the March 19th issue of Salisbury Independent. Shortly thereafter, Ms. Botenelli posted an online petition to gain support for, to establish the Ward Museum State Park. At that time, there were well over 700 signatures on the petition. Now there are well over 1,200. The reaction to this petition reflects the discontent simmering in the greater Salisbury area regarding the closure of the Ward Museum last year. The time is well overdue for someone in the administration of Salisbury University to publicly address the unanswered questions swirling in the community. First of all, who conceived the idea of closing the Ward Museum? Why would an institution of higher learning choose to ax a facility that served as a cultural hub, as well as an environmental learning center for some 50 years? If the motive was indeed financial, show us the documentation of the multimillion-dollar figures quoted last year. Once the decision was made to sever ties with the Ward Foundation, why was there no opportunity to rescue the building and the collection with a fundraising effort? Let's see here. Any questions related, directed to SU regarding the Ward Museum and its collection have been met with silence for the past year. The response of SU to the Ward Museum controversy is far from exemplary to the students and to potential donors. To this letter, I beg the question of when the tide turned away from the Salisbury City Council and the Wacomico County Council regarding the Ward Museum and its contribution to the Salisbury community for some 50 years. Mr. Hirschberger's recent comment of "out with the old and in with the new" may have been directed towards the existing library building. His poor choice of words were hurtful to those who valued and supported the Ward Museum throughout the years. Julie Giordano, Executive of this county council, really recently made an offhanded remark that minimized the collection by stating that perhaps the library might displace some of the decoys. Personally, I bristle when I hear the word referred to as a decoy museum. This mindset discounts the art of, the art form of wildfowl art from utilitarian decoys to exquisite sculptures carved from wood.
If we could ask you to wrap?
What's that?
If we could ask you to wrap up?
Okay, yes. The insurmountable cost to update a 30-year-old building that supposedly outlived its uses as a museum suddenly can be rehabbed at a significant lower price with a library. The catastrophic HVAC failure now is not an issue for the library. As a donor, I'm disappointed and infuriated by the lack of transparency from SU regarding its plans for the extensive Ward collection. With the powers that be are ignoring that each item has a unique story to accompany it. These stories are baked to be told.
We do need to ask you to close, if you don't mind.
And the providence of each piece is lost when the university places a collection of stolen.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Morning.
Good morning. First thing I'd like to say is I, while we do not all agree on the same thing, it is evident that everyone is very passionate about arts, culture, learning, education, nature in our community, and that is a wonderful thing to see. My name is Caroline O'Hare. I am the Events and Culture Manager for the City of Salisbury's Arts, Business, and Culture Department. I made it a point to be here to share my thoughts on this topic because the mission, vision, and goals of my department closely align with what is being proposed today. The mission of the Arts, Business, and Culture Department is to foster Salisbury's thriving economic climate by supporting businesses, expanding economic opportunity, promoting artistic expression, hosting unique experiences, and maintaining regional attractions. We want to make Salisbury known as a place where arts, business, and culture intersect and flourish. With that said, the exchange of properties and the proposed use for each of them is such an elegant solution, meeting numerous needs. To begin with the performing arts center, this would be a boon for our local businesses, bringing both students and visitors from outside the area to Salisbury and Wacomico every day of the week. And much like SU's incredible programming does now on their campus, this facility would elevate and expand what could be offered, most of the time free of charge, to our community. This is an incredible gift to our citizens and our businesses. The proposed move of the Paul S. Sarbanes branch to the former Ward Museum site is also smart. To maintain the property for public use, which has been a call that many of us have said, allows the library to expand programming inside and outside the library with a facility that meets the demands of a modern library. The location is right at the center of numerous neighborhoods, schools, and also very close to a senior living facility. The experiential learning about nature and eastern shore culture at this location is evident, and if that wasn't enough, instead of spending 15 to 24 million to update, not expand or grow, just to update our current library, we now have an opportunity to update the building at Shoemaker Pond for less than half of that, with 84% of that cost being covered by state grants. It's an incredible opportunity, and I cannot express my support enough for this project. It's an outstanding solution, and I hope that this project is approved and moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hare.
Thank you. My name's Joe White. I'm a resident of Wacomico County. The idea of moving the library, I think, is definitely worthy of debate, but I think that there's another perspective here. The whole time the Ward Museum has been located over on Shoemaker Pond, and the entire time since even the library downtown has been renovated, the residents on the east side of the county have been operating in the library out of a portable. Less than two years ago, this council, or this government, I'm not sure if it was the county, if it was the council, built a, or purchased a building in Parsonsburg to move the library. My question is, why would we now spend additional funds when we've already spent money and haven't finished developing it? I think that this same issue is still tied to some of the parks programs that we're talking about. And not to get too off-subject, but we have land, we don't develop it, and then we have to figure out what to do with it. A thousand seat arts center, and to use Mr. DeShiel's words, so that they, so that we're going to move the libraries so they feel safe. Why would we then build a arts center in an area that the library folks don't feel safe in? The library is there to be for the people of the community, and downtown is where they're at. And if there was a need to move a library, wouldn't we start with the building we've already purchased?
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Laura Botenelli, Sussex County, Delaware. There are so many unasked and unanswered questions concerning the lease offered to Wacomico County for the 909 South Shoemaker Drive property. I testify today to give voice to some of these questions and answer with knowledge gained from my working at the property for 16 years, and subsequently following the vanishing of the once treasured cultural property known as the Ward Museum of Wildfowl Art. We first should ask, why is the 909 property even available for being offered for a lease? The former tenant, who were in a decades-long partnership with the landlord, were ousted from the property due to recent financial issues. Their financial history, recent audit, and financial position failed to meet the requirements of business entities affiliated with the landlord. Why were the former tenants in financial distress? The former tenant had their admission, education, and retail business shuttered, most of its earned income, due to the failure of the HVAC systems on the property. The former tenant had their insurance claims denied during the business interruption due to the failure of the landlord to address a known HVAC issue. Did the landlord know that the 909 HVAC needed to be repaired before the July 2022 incident? In July of 2012, the landlord sponsored an HVAC analysis of the property that included the HVAC repair recommendation that went unfunded for a decade and then failed in July of 2022, leading to the property closure and resulting in damages to the former tenant and the landlord. Will a new tenant ever to be able to get insurance package to cover the contents in this building? What else was on that unfunded repair list for the 909 property? Who will pay for the new roof? The next flood? The maintenance of this facility? I recommend the county look further into these concerns. Are there any disputes of title or other concerns that could disrupt the use of this property in the next 10 years? Yes, there are several open concerns that are not yet referenced by the landlord in developing the 2024 proposed lease to the county. There are deeds and grants on the property that require the City of Salisbury and the State Board of Public Works to approve any change of the use of the former tenant's business on this property, and could include the repayment of monies to these governments, governmental agencies by the landlord. Evidence and documents concerning these deeds and grants have been provided to the county council. What's left on the property of the former tenant's activities? Does the landlord expect these new tenants to keep the honorifics to the members of this community intact, which include the Samdite Gateway to Outdoor Discovery, the Richard A. Henson Education Center, the Purdue Courtyard, the Thomas F. Mullin and John A. Nukemeyer Legacy Center, the Stiegler Memorial Garden, the Lowerland Trust Native Plant Garden, and many other names in our communities honored on that site? What happens, and who will take care of the sculpture on the grounds and in the galleries and the nature trails? What are the requirements of the City of Salisbury's Conservation District that this property is a part of? Shouldn't that be referenced in this lease? Will the landlord's police department still have jurisdiction on this property? What about the surveillance? Shouldn't the lease mention this? Who is this landlord, and what are their interests? This landlord is Salisbury University, and it has failed to do the basic due diligence in any of its affairs related to the 909 property and the state assets housed there.
If we could ask you to wrap, Botenelli?
Okay, the university has failed to uphold its standards of integrity, and there is no question that this property should be reopened for the community as soon as possible. It's a shame on our community for forfeiting the shared generosity since the initial gifts of City of Salisbury and Jean Morris Smith, descendant of N. Linwood Morris, documented in that original deed. The city's objectives of the use of this site for a museum, the property has been designated for investment for such purpose for decades, and it's being ignored in the actions offered by this lease. I appreciate the opportunities to share this information, and I look forward to providing more information to others that ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Botenelli. Any other public comments?
Yes.
Good morning. Robert Taylor, 52-year resident of the city and county. Just a little background, I'm not a member of any organizations except a political party that will remain nameless. My wife taught art for some years, many decades at Y High, and a shorter period at the college. On the other hand, on scale, I'm an ex-lawyer, mostly retired, with a degree in agricultural economics, so I guess you could call it a balanced background. I want to say this, first, what you're getting from certain speakers today who are very much in favor of this transaction is basically a snow job and a rush job. Let's do it first. Let's get over on the downside of the mountain, and we'll worry about the problems later. Now, that's exactly the wrong way to do this. There are very substantial problems. Some of them have been mentioned, and I'm going to get into one in a few minutes. Some of them have been mentioned, and I'm going to get into one in a few minutes, or a couple minutes. But I think the first thing to point out is, some of these speakers, for example, Mr. DeShiel, his remarks about moving the library, a lot of the reasons would also apply to having the Performing Arts Center there. They're the same problems, and they're going to be worse, which I'll mention in a minute. The other thing is, it's really been canned by them. You can tell that by the tenor of their scripted remarks. Now, having said that, I want to get into what I brought my drawing for here. And I'll point out, this is from an exhibit that is in the ongoing litigation about the downtown Salisbury.
Bob, you want to stay by the mic, if you don't mind? Thanks.
Correct. Without the work, I just hold it up. I mean, unfortunately. I did this point. What's going to happen, if we can't prevail in that litigation, and we don't know what's going to happen, is that those three lots, which have already been sold for development, aren't going to be there. The yellow sticker is over where the little park has already been built. And I've talked to some people from the university sitting out in the hall. All these parking lots, these three parking lots, will be gone. That plus all of the other parking lots they've sold for development, when that occurs, is going to automatically create just a general problem for parking. Now, if they add a 1,000-seat auditorium, or even a 500-seat one, then their events are going to be further compounding that problem. This needs to be resolved. I understand that Planning Commission last week, it was brought up, Mr. DeShiel didn't want to hear about it. We don't do parking. We're not interested in that. We've got real problems in how this is being portrayed and presented that need to be solved. And I just would say one other thing. How does a state that is in bad trouble financially just find $100 million to do this? I'm really perplexed, and I am a taxpayer.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Good morning. My name is Maida Finch, and I'm a member of the Wycomico Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm also the president of the Eastern Shore Regional Library Board of Trustees. I want to thank the council for its ongoing support of the library. I'm very excited about the proposal to relocate the downtown branch to the Shoemaker Pond facility, and I'm here today to offer some remarks about why I believe this is a good fit for our community. In thinking about what I wanted to say this morning, I recall recent new, I recalled recent new libraries in our neighboring counties, and decided to see what people had to say about them. In 2016, Somerset County Library opened a new branch in Chrisfield. Here are some of the remarks people made about it. "It is a power station, a showplace for Maryland and the Eastern Shore. It allows people on their own initiative to improve themselves." And my favorite, from a young child, "There are computers and books and almost everything." With these comments in mind, computers, books, and almost everything, I looked to see what the Berlin Library in Worcester County, their newest facility, offered when it opened in 2018. In addition to books and computers, it also has 3D printers and a Maker base, demonstration gardens, a local history room, a children's area with space for painting and coloring, as well as reading, a covered patio which connects to the children's section and offers an outdoor play area, a gallery with pieces by local artists, comfortable, well-lit seating with ample wall outlets, community rooms, and study rooms. I am inspired by these recent libraries and can imagine what opportunities the Shoemaker Pond facility holds for our community, and I hope you can as well. In closing, I want to return again to the comments about the Chrisfield Library. It is a library and then some. It is a center of cultural life. With your support, I hope to hear remarks similar about our new library. Thank you.
Ms. Finch.
Good, maybe it's going to be afternoon by now. Good morning.
You've got three minutes.
My name's Audrey Orr. I live in the City of Salisbury. I am also on the Board of Trustees for Wycomico Public Library. And I'm certain many people will talk about the value the library has for seniors, for children, for those experiencing homelessness. And as a side note, I certainly hope that the county and the city work on a long-term solution. Speaking of somebody who volunteers frequently at the Christian Shelter, we definitely need a long-term solution for those experiencing homelessness. But today, I just want to speak briefly about a group of people that you don't necessarily associate with libraries, millennials. Millennials, just as a frame of reference, are folks born from the 1980s to 2000s, so roughly late 20s to maybe mid 40s, and this group is starting a family. They may have young children. They're working or looking for work. They're buying a house, perhaps for the first time. Always nice to add property taxpayers to the county. And there are, if you go online, various guides to the best place to live. What's important to people moving to an area? Certainly the job market, healthcare, school, housing, all important. And they generally refer to vibes. Bear in mind, we're talking about millennials here. I would tend to say quality of life or culture, but vibes was a phrase used. And when you look at it, what makes a community desirable? What makes a community someplace people want to move to? How do we demonstrate this is a county that has values that the millennials value, if you will? So this is an opportunity with the move, looking at a move for the library to the Shoemaker Pond address, this is an opportunity to create that next-generation library, to create that building that has that appeal. And it is important, when you're thinking about people who are moving to the area, to consider, yes, the needs, absolutely, of the current residents, and the needs of the people moving to the area, but it's equally important, as I'm sure any realtor would tell you, and I've never been in real estate, but any realtor would tell you, the wants help make that decision. So I would encourage the council, as you're making your decision about the possibility of a library moving, to think about what will attract people to our county. And I will close with, there was one particularly interesting survey specifically about, quote, millennials who love libraries, and what cities to move to, and there was a nationwide, small cities across the country. The Fed stuff was on that list. I'd love to see Salisbury on that list next time I look. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orr. Morning, Mr. Neat, how are you?
Hey, how's it going? Hi, my name's Marty Neat. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and 25 years ago, I was a member, chairman of the Board of Trustees of the library. I will tell you that right now, the library is in basically the same condition that it was 25 years ago. I mean, it's time to do something about that. We think that this is an opportunity to do something great for that library, and I'd like to congratulate everyone involved in making this thing happen, hopefully. We need a newly renovated, easily accessible library for everyone, particularly for the young folks, the young families, and the older seniors like myself, who most use a library. You know, last year, more than 100,000 people used that library. That's 9,000 a month. Ultimately, if this works, then we have a landmark in the downtown in the Performing Arts Center that will be absolutely changing, transformational for this community, and we'll have an outstanding library that is making use of a facility that can be renovated for a reasonable price compared to a new library, and that's what we're looking to do. One part of this project is going to be to develop, to fully develop, the foundation for the library, and a number of us have agreed to take part in doing that. And that's another asset that, down the road, we feel like we'll be able to do something real good to support the library. So I would just say that anybody that supports this project, please let us know, please be part of the effort. There's an old saying that one person can make a difference, many people can bring about change, and that's what we want to do. So with the council's approval, we'll end up with an outstanding library and an outstanding Performing Arts Center in the core of downtown Salisbury. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neat. Drop the paper. I already paid up to do.
Oh, well, you want to talk in my comments?
Any other comments?
Morning. I'm Alex Emmert. I'm a Wycomico County resident. There's been a lot of talk about how this is a win-win-win situation, how this is great for everybody involved, but I think, as we've seen today, there are some people who have concerns. I personally, I'm sort of somewhere on the fence in this issue, but I do think it's worth taking a look at these concerns, and I think I have a couple that people haven't brought up. So, yeah, some concerns about moving the library and replacing it with a performing arts center. As one of the few places outside of the home and workplace where people can go to just exist and recreate, talk with others in the community, it's important that a library be accessible. The Sarbanes Branch is centrally located and exists as a walkable destination for many people in an area without many similar spaces. There are a few cafes and a playground downtown, but there aren't any sports fields, community centers, gyms, or other establishments that function as third places. Without the library, there would be even fewer spaces downtown for people without cars to recreate or hang out. Replacing the library with a performing arts center would also be bad from a space-usage point of view, I think. We have a space currently that is open for free to all members of the public every day. On most days, it's open from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. People can go there and use free Wi-Fi, computers, borrow laptops, print, notarize, learn a language, join a club, check out books, movies, calculators, you name it. Performing Arts Center would have perhaps a few events a week, most or all of which would require payment to enter. We'd be transforming a lively, free community services hotspot that operates around the clock into a relatively dormant, paid-entry facility right in the middle of downtown Salisbury. I understand that there are some counterpoints. This will save the county some money, and at least in theory, there's a bus stop planned for those without cars. In any case, though, physically relocating the library to an area where it's virtually unwalkable for everyone and away from the population center makes it less accessible and less visible. Saving the county money is always great, but frankly, I think investing in libraries and education is a better option than moving community services away from densely populated areas with underserved populations. We can't always take the cheapest way out, and I think this is a great opportunity for the council to show its commitment to education by investing in public libraries. A performing arts center may be flashy and appealing, but it won't serve the community nearly as well as the library does.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Yes, sir.
Good morning, y'all. Arthur Leonard, Town of Shingitig, County of Wycomac. I'm here representing the Ward Foundation, and a few questions that I have. I hadn't prepared to speak today, so hang on. We were thrown out of the building and told the reason that we were being thrown out of the building was that it was unsustainable. So why now is it all of a sudden a viability, you know, an option? If it's an option that that building is sustainable, then why not let the Ward Foundation and the Wildfowl Art continue to use our home, our building that was purposely built to house the wonderful Wildfowl Art collection? You know, it's, that building was designed to house Wildfowl Art. It was not designed for a library. Is there enough space in that building for the library? You know, there's a lot of questions to it, and I would, hopefully, you guys would sit back and think about this, as to why it's offered all of a sudden for use as a library rather than backed as a museum. You know, there were all these people that have donated millions of dollars to the Ward Foundation and the museum, you know, what are their thoughts? How are they going to react when their donation is being used other than what they intended their donations to be? You know, I don't know if that will have legal ramifications in the future. It's possible, but before you guys decide something, I would give that some thought before you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Captain Joe Lapp, Wycomico County resident. Excuse me. I generally start out anything that I do thinking through the process of what God left us as direction, and that's His word. And I wanted to quote a scripture. It says, John 8:32, it says, "You shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free." And I think that's indicative of a lot of things that are going on here in the county just as a whole. But I want to say this. I spoke in April to the Wycomico County, and during the opportunity when we were going to look at the Ward Museum and why it was closing, now you have the truth. You see the truth. The question is, is what is the truth to you in your mind? Well, it's a real estate situation, in all honesty. It's a move. It's a grant-use situation. And I can't say that I don't really, I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I can't say I agree with it either because of the lack of transparency that was given to us as the citizens in Wycomico County as to saying through SU what was going to happen with the Ward Museum on its actual legitimate circumstances, or what the legitimate circumstances were going to be. So as I think about that, I want to reflect back in 1989, I graduated from Bennett. I was the first recipient, and I talked to Josh about this, I was the first recipient of the VPA program in Wycomico County. That's the Visual and Performance Arts. And I said something to the director, I think it was, at Salisbury when I was talking to them, and I made a comment, and I thought, what a great opportunity for Wycomico County, not only to pull these things together and have a performing arts center, have an educational center, but then when we bring in the library and we think about it, the library is education. Education in books and knowledge gives us power. The arts allows us to have creative thinking. You put creative thinkers behind a canvas, or creative thinkers behind dance, or whatever it may be, the question is, is are you ready, is Wycomico County, to take on a project this big? Now, I always say taxpayers' monies are in the form of grants. The taxpayers pay for that. That's my question for the taxpayers. Are you willing to take a grant? Are you just wanting to put this in on the library aspect, or do you want to also house what is known in this area? You've got to remember, this area was a cultural area, and these items that are in the Ward Museum were developed for substance. They originally were developed for substance, and it's no different than in any other museum. It showcases whatever that issue was for that particular museum in that time. Go to Washington, D.C., and look at the paintings. It was based on the paintings. You go to the art center. Anyway, time's up. My thought is, is to put it together as one whole unit, and pull it together as a county, but let's not rush it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
Good morning. My name is Monica Brooks, and I am a resident of Wycomico County. I'm also president of Wycomico County NAACP, and I'm here to speak about some things about the library. Many great comments have been said, especially from the young man I, thank you. Can I just ditto what you said? But just a couple of other things that I wanted to add is, not only do our libraries provide a safe and free refuge for many, but it also offers tons of support that people would normally have to pay for. Of course, our community access to computers, help with services, employment applications, all of that sort of thing, but even free access to books, those who can't go to Barnes and Noble, and things like that. But more specifically, for our community, with its current location, and I do understand that our library is in great need of repair. It's been in great need of repair, but I don't think things like that should be highlighted, and now we want to do something now that there's something else happening. We really need to care about our institutions and ensure that they are well-funded, well-taken care of, and accessible to the community. In this area here that is so densely populated, there are several neighborhoods that walk, can easily walk to the current space where it's currently located. It has become a place for meetings, for community organizations, that brings people to this downtown area, and for kids, and parents, and... area, and for kids and parents, and not, let's not forget about our English language learners. We know that our immigrant population is growing by leaps and bounds, and so they are also mostly situated in this more focus of the city of Salisbury. Beyond that, moving to a place like the Ward Museum, which I'm not trying to repeat what everyone has said, but I am very concerned about transportation. Transportation is a huge problem here without the library issue. It has been an issue for a very long time. How many people did I see walking up and down Nail or Mill Road, walking down 13, no sidewalks? Even that, beyond that, just access to transportation, the transportation we have, it doesn't go hardly anywhere. And then that brings in the factor of funding. People will now have to pay to go somewhere where they before could walk to. So let's talk about the Performing Arts Center. I love the arts. I'm one of those people that goes to every musical known to man. But I also know that over at Salisbury University, which we typically have to drive to, those, those plays and those, a lot of those things are free. So are the new things going to be free? Is the downtown space going to be altered in such a way that is really not accessible or inviting to the community? We really need to think about those choices, and it doesn't mean that you hate one for the other, it's just that we really need to consider about the people right there who are the frontline and fence-line community members. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Brooks. Any other public comments?
Mr. President, good morning by about four minutes, members of the council. My name is Mike Dunn. I'm the president and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee, also a resident of Wycomico County. I want to address a meeting that took place at GSC just about a year ago when the whole Ward question was really at its height. And we brought the provost of SU, the chief of staff of SU, and many of the people in this room, Mr. LaBelle, I know you were there, Martha Graham, one of my favorite people, were there. It was a two-hour meeting. It was not a fun meeting, but it was meant to be conversational and talk about the Ward. And at the end of that meeting, I said the following to the SU folks, and I said, "I'm about to ask a question that I don't want to ask. You're about to have to answer a question that I don't think you want to give, and to our friends from the Ward, I think you're about to hear something that you don't want to hear." And the question I asked was, is there any chance that Salisbury University is going to change its mind and go back into the Ward Museum? And the answer to that question was no. It was a flat no. From that point forward, the Greater Salisbury Committee kind of knew one thing, which was that most iconic building on Shoemaker Drive could not sit empty. And so we began having conversations with our friends at the library. Those conversations were enjoined by our friends at Salisbury University. And thanks to the reception of the seven of you, and our county executive, and our mayor and our city council of the city of Salisbury, this idea has been well-received, and that's why we're here today. We have an opportunity with the, the bad situation, and everybody in this room acknowledges that the closing of the Ward Museum was not a good look or not a good thing for our community, certainly wasn't a good thing for our friends at Salisbury University, and I think to this day, they will, and two days into the future, they will receive the appropriate criticism, and they're prepared to receive it. But where we are and where we find ourselves today, we have a chance to have the most beautiful library on Del Marva and perhaps in the state of Maryland. We have a chance, again, thanks to our friends at Salisbury University, they want to bring a $100 million investment into the heart of Wycomico County. And out of some pretty bad lemons, we've been able to make some lemonade. And thanks to your willingness to entertain this, a lot of what you have to do up there has to do with what makes sense from a fiscal perspective, but I might say it makes sense relative to what's good for this community, and why don't we deserve the best library in the state of Maryland and on the eastern shore, and why don't we deserve a new performing arts center in the heart of our county? And with that, I thank you for your consideration. I know this is not easy things for you to do. I know my time is up, and we appreciate your support on moving the library to Shoemaker and for the Performing Arts Center downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Good afternoon now. According to Mike, it's afternoon. Nicely said, Mike, one of my former friends, current friend. That came out wrong. Boy, that came out wrong. I wanted to say former students, and then I thought twice about that because we are almost in the same era of life. I'm Lynn Bratton. For many years, I was a guidance counselor at Wycomico High School, then at Jameson Bennett, then over to another county, and I've lived in Wycomico County for a boatload of years, live over on South Boulevard. I'm very active in the arts community through community players. I've done most of their costuming for 40-plus years. So if you've seen many, many of the shows, you've seen my sewing skills up on those stages. So I'm not against anything that would bring arts and, and great shows here to Salisbury. What I am against is the, and I know you're saying it happened a couple of years ago, but I think there's, there's value in think first to understand and then to be understood. It's an old Covey principle taught by Mr. Wagner at Bennett for many years. Think first to understand, then to be understood. The community is shouting out, "Don't move the library because we can walk to it. We have populations that need to be close to it. It's a cultural entity of itself right here in our downtown area. Think first to understand, then to be understood. It may seem fine to move things, but let's really play that out." And then the next one that I love is think with the end in mind. That is another one of the Covey principles that I think often people don't follow through on. Where do we want to be 20 years from now? What is this going to look like in 15, 20 years? The article today in the newspaper said, "May be built downtown." We don't know that it's going to happen downtown. It's still a, a work in progress. It still has so many moving parts that you move the library, and then what are we left with? An empty building that the housing and community development gives us a $10 million grant to knock down? Could we build a, maybe we put a parking lot there. Maybe that would make sense. So that would solve some other issues that we have in downtown Salisbury. Selling off our parking lots probably wasn't something that was thought with the end in mind. We thought immediate, they thought immediate housing, downtown, beds and heads, and heads and beds, and that sort of thing. But yet now, we have nowhere for anybody to park, to put their head in a bed. So we have issues with that as well. Again, I'm not against the arts. I'm not against the move. I'm just here, I think we need more information, and I think there are a lot of moving parts that need to truly be understood before we go forward with this. Lack of meeting spaces, lack of ability to get to, just getting out to the Ward Museum for someone that lives on Church Street requires, first, if you want to use an Uber, it requires a credit card, which most, many people don't have, and it requires money, cash, and somebody that will accept cash. And a lot of the places don't accept cash anymore unless you get a taxi cab. You have to understand where the, where are, where the people who use the library are before you decide any further. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Any other public comments?
Good afternoon. First, let me just thank members of the council, folks like Mike Dunn at GSC, Marty Neet, Seth at the library, the county executive for being open to this. You've heard the-
Identify yourselves, sir.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. I'm Eli Modlin, Chief of Staff and Vice President for Public Affairs at Salisbury University, here on behalf of our president, who's on campus celebrating graduation activities This, this decision is the first step to helping us see that end goal, to helping us see 15, 20 years down the line. I believe that what the council has for them is an opportunity, and you've heard that word a few times today. It's an opportunity to have a state-of-the-art library with minimal cost to the taxpayer in Wycomico County. It's an opportunity to have a world-class performing arts center, one that we have already received commitments from the state on. It's an opportunity to turn what's been described as nothing short of a very difficult situation into a win-win. It's an opportunity not just to see an investment in downtown to the tune of over a $100 million performing arts center, but also to see a state investment into what we've described as, as one of the finest libraries in the state of Maryland, open to the public. So this is that first step for the council to take to allow us to do our part to bring that investment from the state of Maryland, from our donors and friends to Wycomico County. So thank you for your time and your openness to this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Modlin.
My name is Seth Hirschberger, resident of Wycomico County and very proud to be your head librarian. I'm the library director for Wycomico Public Library, and I appreciate the staff and the board that are here, too. And also, everybody who has, who has commented about the library, whether you're concerned about this move or you're fully supportive of it, it always is just wonderful to me to see people thinking about the public library, what it means to the community, and, and just recognizing the potential and the importance of this institution is just wonderful to see for, for everybody, for, for everybody, even those that are concerned about this move. I'm, I'm concerned about this move, too. I'm, I'm excited about it. I believe it is the right thing for us to be doing. Ever since I, you know, first started working on it, I, I hear the concerns, and I, I want to share that we have been very thoughtful about the access issues related to the library. And it is so important, we know, that the library be accessible. And part of the reason why I believe this move is the right thing for us right now is that our downtown location, what I hear most often from people when they talk about why they come to the library, why they don't come, is that they, they do find it difficult to access the library, especially those people we know with becoming the most often are, are older citizens of Wycomico, and also the families with really young children, who just find it really difficult to, to park downtown and then to access the library. There's, there's not a lot of handicap parking in the area, and it's also, if you've got little kids, you're walking across streets, and people just prefer to avoid that, and they would like a place where they could park easily, have designated free parking, which we lack here, and they can walk into the building and access the library. And also, we know our patrons really want a place where they're proud of, where they enjoy spending time, where they can just exalt in the beauty of the architecture and be proud of the community that they're from. And we're missing that now. Wycomico has fallen behind our neighbors on the shore with providing a facility that's really something that we can all take great pride in. At the same time, we don't want to, to abandon downtown, and we won't. And that's right in our library's strategic plan, which is posted on the library's website, it's an official document approved by the board, that we have promised and committed that we are going to maintain a physical presence, bricks and mortar, a place where people can visit and it would stay downtown. We don't have to have our flagship main location there. The focus for that destination should be that it's accessible to everybody across the entire county, whereas a neighborhood branch, like the kind we have at the Center Mall, and like the kind that we have in Pittsfield, is really focused on the more immediate vicinity and the accessibility there, because there are a lot of people who live within walking distance of downtown. We're proud that we're able to be accessed by the folks who walk from the area, and also the people that live downtown. And there's going to be more and more young people that call downtown Salisbury their home, and we want to be part of that, the vibrant hub that downtown is, even while we're providing a glorious, beautiful facility for the whole community that we can all take pride in. We also really are excited about working, my time's up, I just want to add one more thing, that we're excited about working and preserving the mission of the educational mission that existed at the Ward and the programming that they were famous for, working with partners to carry that on. It fits with our mission, and it's the perfect place for it, that facility. And also to work with Salisbury University to provide spaces, permanent spaces in the library, where there can be rotating exhibits of, of the beautiful art that that building was also known for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschberger. Afternoon.
Yes, it is afternoon. My name's Tony Sarbanes. I wanted to make a comment. My brother's name is on that building, and that is an honor that our family is deeply thankful for. As a side note, my brother and I played high school basketball when that building was a National Guard army. So we're kind of dating ourselves. That ended in 1954, in case you're wondering about that. And then the current Y-Hi was built, and they have their own gym. We're honored that Paul's name is on that building. I've looked at it. Parking is an issue downtown. I've, I've tried everything, going, parking, is it accessible, is it not accessible? Older folks my age would take their grandchildren down there, park across the street. They can't do that anymore. When you say to a senior, "Just go in the parking garage, you can go up four floors," they're not going. Just not going to do it. It's a fact of life. Where they are now, the Ward Museum's a beautiful place. All of us are sorry to see that, what happened to it, but it, it's happened. History's moving on. Time is moving on. There's a great plan to convert that to another usage, a great usage, and accessible by track, by, by cars. You know, everybody gets around. If they want to go someplace, they get around. No matter what the age, they get around. It's a tough move. I think it's a good move. I hope you will support it. I think in the long run, we'll all be better off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarbanes.
My name is Martha Graham, and I live in Wycomico County. I am listening to all this, and I'm thinking, we have got a great opportunity here. I heard Phil Atkins speak about the Ward Museum. I've been a volunteer at the Ward Museum for many years. I have taught several children's classes. I have participated in their cultural arts programs, their discussions about heritage on the eastern shore. It has been a wonderful facility. I also, and a big library person, and I'm an avid reader, I think we have a great opportunity here to put together a new library and a cultural center with the Ward Museum's collection and its knowledge about the local heritage. It would be a great educational facility, and we should not just think about it being a library alone. Let's go into a library for the millenniums. Let's do something big and interesting, and let's put our money there. I also have to address Salisbury University and what happened with the Ward Museum. I love Salisbury University. I'm a graduate of their art programs. I'm a member of the community and college gowning, gowning community group. They're doing great things over there. They have multiple ideas as to where they want to go in the future. They, I have been on this group with Eli Modlin for about six years now. In that period of time, we have had several presidents. We have had governors change office. That means different ideas, different things that people want to support. There was going to be a removal of the dorms to put in a health school there. That didn't materialize. There was going to be a performing arts center on the old Temple Hill parking lot, which is now a piece of macadam that is a truck parking lot owned by the university. Nothing has happened there. And so now the emphasis is on this new student center at the university, which is a very good idea. We need to get the enrollment up there. It's a good idea to do that. It's going to be very costly. These things fluctuate with the desire of the president, with the payment of the governor. You never can be sure how things are going to turn out. So I want you to listen very carefully to what Laura Bonnelli had to say about having the university as your landlord, because you never know who is going to be focused on what. As the changes go through the administrations- go through the administrations of our government and our university. Be very careful about them being your landlord. I understand that it's a 30-year lease. Be sure you know who's going to pay for maintenance. Listen to what Lori has said to you, because it is very important. That being said, I hope that we could do something really fabulous out there on that big piece of land that was given to the community as a museum and cultural center. Let's add our library to it, and let's go for something really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good afternoon. Vaughn Siggers, Wycomico County resident, had no intentions of speaking this morning, but the thought occurs to me that the library is worthy of being improved, whatever improvements need to be made to it. Please take into consideration making those improvements and making it a facility that we can appreciate in this modern age, and perhaps turning the Wards Museum into the facility that you're hoping to bring to the downtown area. It is centrally located to most of our high schools. It seems to have parking already intact. It seems to have enough points about it to develop it into the viable facility that you're hoping to bring to the downtown area, and will still serve Wycomico County as valuable entertainment or culture in that site as it would in the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you, Siggers. Any other public comments?
Members of the council, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to first show support of the library and the endeavors that have come before the council today. My name's Jonathan Holloway. I was born and raised in Wycomico County, am a current resident, and also a business owner of property on Shoemaker Drive. First, I want to thank both the university, the county library, and the council for considering this opportunity for improvement of the library and the facilities rendered to the community. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the challenges that have been faced also by the Ward Foundation over the past few years, as well as the challenges faced by the library for unfortunately decades as it comes to funding and infrastructure challenges. Many of the challenges faced, of course, by the council are difficult decisions, and we thank you for making those decisions on behalf of the community. As a business owner on Shoemaker Drive, I come to you today to express support for the relocation of the library, not only for the many improvements that it would bring and the opportunities for a modern solution to the library and the support that it has for our community and its residents, including the enhanced accessibility with parking there directly on-site for both patrons, as well as the facility being more accessible from a handicap perspective. The cost efficiencies are very clear in many of the plans proposed, and we commend those that developed and researched so much in such a quick period for this opportunity to take place. We look forward to the strategic partnerships that the county, the library, and the university may have together. And then finally, I want to just acknowledge the library for their commitment to still having a satellite facility downtown that can be specific to really the needs of the downtown community. And again, just acknowledge the library for that commitment to the community and those specific needs downtown. In the words of Al Roker, as I mentioned, business owner on Shoemaker Drive, "We are honored at the opportunity to have a new and the best library in the state of Maryland in our neck of the woods." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments on Resolution 50-2024. We appreciate everybody's time and their comments. entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution Number 50-2024.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I was thinking it'd be good if we could give Eli and Seth a minute, just to, they only had three minutes.
Would you like to come forward here?
If you guys had some time, you wanted to put some things to bed.
Others come forward, Dan.
No, Bob. If you could state, starting with Andrew, for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Andrew Illuminati, County Attorney's Office.
Seth Hirschberger, library director, Wycomico Public Library.
Eli Mottman, Salisbury University.
Thank you.
I would just like to give you an opportunity to explain what this is going to look like for people downtown. Like, we've got people that want to see the Ward collection being utilized in any way possible. I hear the museum is completely off the table, but is there a way that we can interwove this? And also, what is your vision as a satellite library downtown for the needing community that's walking distance, that they don't have, they don't have internet, they don't have access to meeting rooms or anything like that? What is your vision for that? It may not be that building. It may be a completely different building, but what's your vision on that? And then for Eli, what is your, like, what do you think is going to, the performing arts building will look like? What is that going to look like for us in four years when it's built, or five years, or whenever it's built? Thank you.
I've admired a number of libraries that have a downtown location that is more set up like an express neighborhood branch like that we have right now in Pittsville, that's focused on the neighborhood itself, on the people who actually live there and who are nearby, and that we can cater to those interests, those needs, in terms of both programming and the collection. Keep it small, keep it high quality, keep it fresh, lots of rotating materials in terms of the books and materials. The spaces suitable for small meetings, so that we do have small, small meeting room space and also workroom space. But really keep everything small, so that it is really a neighborhood, community branch. I'm really excited about that as much as anything else also, that we would have a downtown presence, and that it would really match the vibe and the direction of downtown Salisbury. Rather than having our flagship destination branch there, which is really intended to serve the entire community, but that we can put that in a more accessible place so that everybody, whether they live in Salisbury, or they live in Pittsville, or they live in Byeville, or whatever, and they come into Salisbury to shop and for their other purposes, the library is an easy, accessible place for them to visit as well while they're there and spend time, and meet their community and feel a part of their community. And that is our vision. And that can be, in terms of the downtown location, it could be accomplished with 3,000 square feet, so it doesn't need to be a whole lot. And we have a plan that we're already considering to very affordably do that within our operating budget present.
Okay. And then what was your vision about, is there going to be some sort of the collection at the new facility, maybe?
Yes, we've not formalized this, but of course Salisbury University owns most of the collection. And we intend, when we redesign that facility, to retain as many of the unique architectural features that are there, including a lot of the built-in displays that are there, and offer those as permanent spaces where rotating collections from the Ward Collection can still be on view there as part of the architectural design and feel of the space. It really fits well, and the programming that we would offer there in partnership, the environmental science and conservationist programming that we can do there with all the outside spaces that are available as well. Really excited about carrying that on too.
And transportation. That was another one on my list, transportation.
Transportation is important, because we know that if public transport exists in a community and a public library exists, the two must meet. And so we've started working on that to make sure that it would be, there would be a short transit stop in that Beigland Parkway corridor.
Good. Anyone else? Yes, Jeff.
I hate to pick on you, Seth. We've got a lot of the public here, plus they're watching on TV. Can you talk about the, something that we're charged with is the financial impact of all this, not discounting the artistic impact, but am I correct, in 2021, it was estimated to refurbish the current library building, we're looking at 18 to 20 million? That number's probably gone up, right?
Right. That feasibility study that we completed in '21, that was a full feasibility study performed by an architecture engineering firm that came in and looked at the facility, as well as our other branches, and advised us on what needed to happen to bring it, you know, up as a modern library space that's suitable. We were looking at figures of at least 20 million and 27 for a new construction for everything that needed to happen there, including new F and E and so forth. So that's, at a baseline, we felt like that was out of reach, and that we were, we had been proposing very small increments, just slight maintenance, to the county council as part of the five-year CIP. This offers an opportunity for the county to really take a giant leap forward in terms of providing a suitable library facility at a fraction of the cost of a new build or the extensive renovation that would be required downtown.
Can you go over the build-out, I'll call it, of the proposed Ward site, and how much of that would be?
Right. And I think this is one of the reasons why the library is the ideal, maybe the only partner for the county to work together with Salisbury University to preserve what was the Ward Museum and is an iconic structure on all the brochures, as a still public space, where the community has more access to than they've ever had before as a public library. Because public libraries are eligible to request and receive, here in Wycomico, 84% of any capital project that's specific for public library. And so we've already actually prepared the grant application for that, and we will submit that later this week, depending what takes place here today, to request 84% of the preliminary cost estimate that we've acquired for the costs that we know are needed to make that building suitable to be occupied as a public library.
Yeah. I think a comment was made earlier that grant funding is still paid for by the taxpayers, which is absolutely correct. But the fact is, the grant funding is out there, and if we don't take it, somebody else will.
Right. And we have not been taking enough of it for a number of years. It's been going to larger counties, where the counties are making larger matches. This one, this will be the first significant opportunity for that capital fund endowment to come into Wycomico to support a great library system for us.
And my favorite question. How many parking spaces are at the Ward Museum?
There's 130.
130. Okay, good. Thank you.
Joe.
I guess from the comment from one of the speakers is pretty much the question, be careful who you're dealing with here. I guess we saw the college remove the Ward Museum, and I don't understand the financial part. They couldn't afford to fix the Ward Museum, but they can afford $100 million for a new facility. And I'm in favor of moving the library. I think it's a good move. I just want to know that the county's protected. So I will ask our council attorney, who's at one end of the table, and then Mr. Illuminati, if they want to, he wants to respond to, this lease, are we protected in this lease? Is there anything in it that doesn't look right?
I've communicated with Mr. Illuminati about the lease. The lease is acceptable to me. It's a, the county essentially...
That's a yes, Joe. I'm not done yet. I've got another question.
The, to the, my understanding that the lease, the way this is being structured is, the reason the county is being asked to approve the lease and the MOU is that by entering into the lease, it allows the county to make the application for the grant. They can't make the application for the grant unless they either own the property or are a tenant for the property. By having a lease, they become eligible to make the grant application. I believe I understand that correctly. So the reason this is structured in the way it has been is to allow that to happen. The lease is for a dollar a year, so the county has minimal economic issues if it doesn't happen. The, I was sitting here because there were some comments made about this process, and I will defer to Ms. Hurley, but by my recollection, by my notes in here, this is the first step in what probably will be at least six separate steps that the county council will have to take in order for this to actually culminate in the library moving there and the project coming downtown. So if you approve the lease today, that allows the library to make the grant application. That grant application, if I understood correctly from the previous, is going to take, you'll know in a year or so whether or not you get the grant. If the library doesn't get the grant, the library doesn't have the monies to make the improvements to this. Basically, the project will presumably stop at that point, or the lease is going to have to be reconsidered. As part of that, the property currently is owned essentially by the state of Maryland, and the Board of Public Works for the state has to agree to declare that library property excess or surplus property, and they have to agree to convey it to the county. By the same token, if you ultimately do this project, the county is going to have to declare the current library property surplus, and is going to have to have a public hearing at the time that they do that. So there will be another public hearing for the public to come in and comment about whether this is a good project or not a good project. By the same token, if the grant is approved, there's going to be a public hearing, I think, on whether to allow the library to accept the grant. So there's at least two public hearings that have to occur in addition to today. And then, assuming you do that, the county's going to also have to authorize the county executive to actually acquire the property, which I think is another public hearing. Whether they can somehow be combined, I'm not sure, but my only point is, this is the first step in a five or six or seven-step process that is going to include at least two or three or four other public hearings where the public can come in and be updated as to what the process is, what the expectations are. So while this has been, kind of been presented by speakers as we're going to move the library and build the center downtown, that may ultimately be what happens, but it's a multi-year process that's going to require at least six or seven separate stages for the county council to address with multiple public hearings where the public gets to come in and understand what is being proposed and what the numbers are and the feasibility. So I just want to make clear that this is just a, this is a very small step, and that step is basically being taken, and it's been structured in this manner, to allow the county library to actually put in the application for the grant to even see if this is a feasible project.
We don't, we don't assign the property, our current library property, to the college until the time comes that they assign the Ward Museum property to us.
It will be at some point in the future, the exact process, I don't know exactly if it's going to be the same day or how it's going to be happening, but it's in the future, and it's going to require the council to approve it, and there's going to be a public hearing process as part of it.
I'm in favor of moving the, moving the library to the Ward Museum, and I know that's not part of, we're up here, far as to discuss what's happening to the new, the old library, but I think $100 million center downtown where all this free stuff happens is pie in the sky. So I've been going over to the college for a number of years for different programs and events, and I've not found anything free over there yet. So, anyway.
Just a question, I guess, a number of speakers have brought up the idea of actually combining the Ward Museum and the library. I think Captain Leipens, Ms. Williams, and others have mentioned that, where it's not just, you know, the library has a display, it's a couple items, not like a 90-10, but would you all consider something more like, you know, a 60-40 share, where it's two, you know, two pieces together? And how does that affect things?
Well, 60-40 sounds like it might be a little bit too much of a pinch in terms of the square footage that we need. We are going to, you know...
We could build on, I mean... We could build on, I mean, right.
Well, certainly, I mean, that's, it's on 10 acres, and that's part of the reason why this is also exciting, is we've got room to expand and grow. The outdoor space certainly offers a lot of opportunities for partnership. I think, and I'm confident that we can provide, not just a corner somewhere, but a substantial amount of permanent exhibit space, if we have the opportunity to put those beautiful artworks of art on display in our museum, in our library, we're going to be very excited to do that.
I guess the other question, multiple people have brought up, the honorifics were the, the namings of all these multiple centers and pieces within the current building, what happens to those?
Yes, and we've, we've talked about that with the Salisbury University officials already, in terms of a couple of cases, where they've officially received requests from individuals who had made donations and received naming rights associated with those. My board has discussed it. At this point, I'm willing to say, and very happy to say, that we're going to work with Salisbury University and donors, on making that process of retaining as many naming rights as makes sense for the library, so that those names can stay in the building.
And then lastly, I guess, I should say, we absolutely and utterly need a new library. We said that literally 20 years ago. As many have mentioned, this feels opportunistic, not intentional. You know, it doesn't feel like, you know, we had a county executive or somebody come in and say, hey, let's, let's make sure that we got a new library seven years from now, we're going to have a new Star Beans Library Branch, it's going to be fantastic, it's going to be on the, you know, that was not what happened, it just felt like this was a decision where like, okay, well, I guess we've got this thing that's open, let's go do that. I'm glad that everyone's in the room here, because I feel like for the first time, I actually get everyone hearing each other. The amount of people that have come out to me, and I work in conservation, agriculture, natural resources, so I get it, I'm a little bit, I hear a lot of those voices, but those folks have been very, very, very upset with this whole process. We literally had a, an extra two-hour meeting for something that, you know, hosting the Ward Museum conversation here, for something that had nothing to do with us, almost a year ago. So, I guess, I'd like to, and I would like to continue to see that we are valuing both the arts and our natural resources, and what makes us, us as an area or region, in addition to providing 20, 21st century, in the next century, you know, 22nd century, that we are moving forward and actually making sure that this area, that this space can be something pivotal. And I get, and by the way, the other conversations, you know, the amount of people who have come to me and said, like, on their, just upset that we're moving out of the downtown, you know, I know now, I'm, thank you for being responsive for that, but every other city in the down, in the Delmar Peninsula has their library downtown. So, I guess, going forward, I have a whole lot of questions about this, and it does feel like it's rushed in a bit, that's upsetting, where it's either a win-lose. I cannot stand a Rob Peter to pay Paul type of mentality of, okay, well, these will be winners, these will be losers, and that's kind of what it feels like. But, what I would love to be able to see, I would have loved to be able to see the Ward Museum really used for what it was, which was an $8 million asset, to have the library be something intentional, that we all said that we planned, we wanted to see it happen, and it's going to be the best one that we could possibly have. I get it, we're not a very wealthy county, so that's probably not going to happen, but maybe we can find some sort of path forward, where we really feel like we're not losing the $8 million economic engine that was the Ward Museum, and that we're not, you know, that we're not being disrespectful for the folks who actually put their time and invest in money, many of us all in this room, I've seen you all, we were all at those ribbon cuttings at the Ward Museum. So, I don't want to lose that either. So, I guess going forward, I don't feel like we've really thought through this in a way, it doesn't, I'd agree with the folks that say that it feels like it's an opportunity, and for that, I'm going to hold back on this, but I do want us to try to think through, what, I mean, we're, we're a good collection of smart people, and the best part is, every, the amount of people who actually are here who really care about this, including the over, well, it is close to 1,300 people that signed a petition for the Ward Museum, that's 1,300 people who cared about the Ward Museum and wants to actually see it go forward. They feel quite disrespected to suddenly be pushed out, and to say that, you know, that now another institution's going to be in there. So, I would love to see us go forward, where we can continue to be a little more thoughtful about this, as we go through these next, which is going to be a long iterative process, that we then start to be thoughtful, how we can be, maybe bring all, some of this together. So, I appreciate, by the way, and I want to say it again, I appreciate all of you, the library board, the library, you know, the leadership, the Ward Museum leaders, the donors, all of you have worked very hard for a very long time for these two incredible institutions. And I'm not even talking about Salisbury University, which is another third incredible institution, I want to help you all get where you want to go, but I hope we figure out, going forward, maybe something that's a little bit more of a compromise, and try to make decisions together in a broader capacity, instead of, you know, a limited few coming up with opportunities. I want to continue to see us plan. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We do want to, we do want to wrap this up.
Mr. President, if I could, just real quick, and it's to address something that Councilman Holloway just asked, and was, that mentioned earlier, and it was, who are we going into business with? And respectfully, I'd say to this council, that you are going into business with an institution that's been in this county for almost 100 years, has invested in this community time and time again. We are here before you, because we want to increase that investment. The people sitting behind me today, the people in this audience that are connected to the university, are not just people that are from over the bridge, they live here, they work here, they've raised their families here, and they are committed to this community, and we are very confident that the leadership of Wycomico County will treasure this space, will lead this endeavor, and the space that we're trying to give the county in a way that will make it financially sustainable, which was not the case in the past. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marlin. Mr. Benson, I appreciate your comments as far as the timeline is concerned, it also allowed us to recognize some of the issues about parking. I know, Mr. Marlin, that you are in serious negotiations with the city of Salisbury, in reference to that, we appreciate that, but with the reference of the fact that this could be another year before we actually, you know, sign, you know, the dotted line on it, that will, I think, give you efficient time, sufficient time to maybe come to a resolution with the city of Salisbury on the parking, and we can address that in the future, the near future.
Thank you, we agree.
Thank you very much. Entertaining motion from council to, all those in favor of Resolution 50-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One in opposed, Resolution 50-2024 passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hurley?
Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 51-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 2024 operating capital budget to make a supplemental appropriation from prior year fund balance, for the purchase of 112 East Marcus Street, Salisbury, Maryland, in the amount of $1,200,000 for the Child Advocacy Center, and inspection costs, closing costs, and renovation costs estimated at $250,000, for a total of $1,450,000. And Pam Olin here, Director of Finance, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, we open forward for a public hearing on Resolution Number 51-2024. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county residents, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 51-2024. Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 51-2024.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got some comments to make.
All right, Joe.
And I know we're doing a resolution after this, for...
If we could, please, in the audience, Joe, go ahead.
To, you know, acquire this building, this is the funding for it. This, this building is in a flood zone. It's in a, let's see, I've got my notes here somewhere, I'll get my write notes, it's in what they call an AE flood zone, which is a high-risk flood zone. The building's been flooded before, I've talked to one of the employees, that said they actually have water in their desk. I believe someone else talked to one of the managers of the building, said it had been flooded. They put floodgates on this building to keep, try to keep the water out. The neighbors have sandbags stacked up against their buildings, in the parking lot, up against their doors. We took a tour of the building, James, and Jeff, and myself, and, you know, there's obvious stains in the carpet, where the carpet's been wet near the back of the building. We just spent $3 million to move, to move our health department to Mount Herman Road, from the hurdle building over here on Main Street, because of water issues. There's a basement there, water comes up in the basement, doesn't come up because of the river flooding. But the river floods this building that we're talking about, borrowing one point, or not borrowing, taking from contingency or whatever, 1,045,000. This is, this is not a smart move for a government to do, you know? I mean, we're getting rid of one building because of water issues, and we want to buy another building? I don't know where everybody at this table or in this room lives, but I can tell you one thing, I'll bet you didn't go buy a house and get a mortgage on it, or pay for it, and it was in a flood zone, and it had histories of flooding, if you did, you were misled into buying it. We're not being misled here, we might be misled to be tried to convince to buy it, but we're not being misled, because the history's there, it's flooded. You know, FEMA, it's an AE flood zone. Now, are we going to put, I've asked, I've asked for, and that'll come up in the next resolution, but I asked for a mold test to be done, and I don't know whether it was done or not, we haven't received it correct. A mold test isn't just looking under the carpet, or looking above the tiles in the ceiling, or behind the picture on the wall, to see if there's mold. A mold test is done with checking the air, it could be, could be clean, but if it floods again, they say it's a 100-year flood plain, well, it flooded about 15 or 16 years ago. That doesn't mean it's going to wait another 15 or 16 years to flood, it might not, might flood next week, might be 10 years before it floods again. But you put your employees and the people you're trying to serve at risk by buying a building that's in a flood zone, and has, it's susceptible to flooding. So, I'll leave that, and I'm sure there'll be some more discussion somewhere down the line.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments from council? All those in favor of Resolution 51-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried five to two, I believe, yes. Resolution 51-2024 passes. Ms. Hurley?
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number 52-2024. This is to authorize the county executive to acquire real property, shown as 112 East Marcus Street, Salisbury, Maryland, for the purpose of relocating the Child Advocacy Center.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 52-2024. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Lynn, did you get the vote? Opposed on the last?
John, James.
Okay. Joe, go ahead.
I almost got through my list.
We have the three-minute clock up there.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. You never held us to that, John, but anyway. I'm disappointed in this, I really am. I'm disappointed that this council would even consider this. I called two bankers last night, one's retired, one's still working. The one that's retired, I told him the whole story, I said, let me ask you a question. I said, if somebody walked into, when you were, when you were still a bank president, and laid this on the table, would you finance it? He said, no, I would not, wouldn't want no parts of it. So, I called another fellow, he's not retired, and they actually have quite a bit of money lent in the Worcester County area, this one bank does, and I talked to him, and he said, yeah, he said, but they better have a real, real good down payment. So, there's a lot of risk here to this. I mean, I can't believe we're risking safety, and at some point, safety and welfare of county employees, and buying a building that has a history of flooding, and is susceptible to flooding in the future. I don't understand it. So, that's my last thing I have to say about it.
And we appreciate your concerns, Joe, I understand that as well. I would, I would tend to disagree with you, there are people who buy property in flood zones all the time, and it is a matter of degrees as to whether or not we feel it's the risk involved here, and I know I personally feel that, I recognize the risk, but I don't think it's such a great risk that we have to be that concerned about it, and abandon the project altogether.
John, we asked for, we asked for a mold test, and I haven't seen it yet, we were told we would have one.
I understand, I don't have a lot of confidence in a mold test either. Josh?
I'd just say, I think there is real validity to, obviously, to what Councilman Holloway's saying. I feel like it's not a great situation, that, but this is what the Child Advocacy Center said they wanted, this is a building that, they have very strict requirements for what they can use, and it's not an ideal situation, but, and climate change is happening, it's that water, that property will eventually be in the water, but in the meantime, it's probably going to be intermittent, but it is a real concern. I'm still voting in support of it, obviously, because it's what, it's what the Child Advocacy Center wants, so, yeah.
Any other comments?
I agree with, Josh, I don't think it's the right building, but the, the requirements of the Advocacy Center made me go that route, and I don't know what other building they could have, with what they did require to have.
Any other comments?
Just so the public knows, I think one of the main requirements is the proximity to the courthouse, that's apparently very, very important, so...
Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 52-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
We have two opposed, James and Joe. Resolution 52-2024 passes.
Okay, next, the next item for business is Resolution Number 53-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 2024 budget to make a supplemental appropriation from contingency in the amount of $825,000, to a capital improvement fund for the benefit of the volunteer fire departments within the county.
Entertaining motion, entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 53-2024. May I have a motion, second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Mr. Lufman, how are you?
Hi, doing great. Good afternoon, I think now.
Any questions for Mr. Lufman? Questions from council? All those in favor of Resolution 53-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Could we have the names, please? Shanny, yes, Josh, and James, all those opposed?
Opposed. Opposed.
Opposed, chairs opposed, Resolution Number 53-2024 does not pass. Thank you, Mr. Lufman.
Okay, next is a submission of three appointments to the Recreation and Parks Commission by Mr. Bunkie Lufman.
Yeah, as the council administrator said, we have three appointments for the Recreation Commission, they meet in advisory capacity, we have Steve Miller, our director, here as well, so if you have specific questions for, you know, Rec., or, or the commission general, or specifically, you know, I'll direct them to him.
Thank you, Mr. Lufman.
Before you, this is Resolution Number 54-2024, this is confirming the appointment of Monica Pelosi as a member of the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 54-2024. Do you move? Second. Any discussion?
I just had one question.
Sure.
Just quick, I was just curious, what's the process on getting on these boards? How can, if I was in the crowd here today, how could I get on the board?
So, from my office's perspective, typically, the, the board nominees, if you will, come from a staff person of the board. For instance, you know, this, in this instance, it'd be Mr. Miller, if it was planted, it's only be Lori Carter, or someone in that would recommend it, and then we have a conversation with them, and...
All right. So, like, me as a citizen, I couldn't just walk up to you and say, this is just for every board, I couldn't come to your office and say, I would like to be on this board, what do you think?
You, you could absolutely say that, but then, honestly, what I would do, if you want to be on this specific board, is I'm going to go to the director and say, hey, is this a good fit, you know, because even though, there are some boards and commissions where there are specified seats, like, there's this person who, and I'll go to my DNR days, like, for sports fisheries, you have someone who's literally a sports fisherman or woman, has to be on that board, and then there's maybe a scientist, maybe there's, so, but our boards tend to be much broader, so what staff helps us with is to make sure that there's a robust commission from different viewpoints, so... from different viewpoints, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Real quick, hey, Bunkie, are these, the people that are on this commission, are they representation from all across the different parts of the county? Or are they central to any one location?
Yes, Steve Miller, Director of Recreation Parks Tourism, yes. On Rec and Parks Commission, we do make an effort to have representation from all parts of the county. Yes.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor of Resolution 54-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 55-2024, confirming the appointment of Deanna J. Harrow as a member of the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 55-2024. So moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 56-2024, confirming the appointment of Matthew Heim as a member of the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 56-2024. So moved. Second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 56-2024 passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 57-2024. This is extending the date for the adoption of the annual budget and appropriation bill from June the 1st, 2024 to June the 15th, 2024. Charter Section 705-F provides that the annual budget and appropriation bill shall be adopted by the county council no later than June the 1st or such date as may be set by resolution pursuant to Section 707 of the charter, but no later than June the 15th. Extending the date for the adoption of the annual budget and appropriation bill will allow council time to follow the review and discuss the county executive's proposed budget. Also, June 1st is on a Saturday, and the next regularly scheduled council meeting is on June the 4th. So this will allow council to adopt the budget during a regular meeting unless a special meeting is needed.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 57-2024. So moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 58-2024. This is to appoint the board of managers of various public drainage associations within Wacomico County.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 58-2024. So moved. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 59-2024. This is to certify the drainage tax role to the Director of Finance as requested by the Board of Managers of the Public Drainage Tax Associations.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 59-2024. So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 60-2024. This is amending the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2025 through 2029. Our internal auditor discovered that there were two different versions of the CIP posted on the county's website, one showing 20.5 million for the Fruitland Primary School as PEGO funding, and the other showing 16.5 million as PEGO funding and 4 million as bond funding. During the discussion of the CIP, when it was adopted, there seemed to be some confusion about the 4 million being PEGO funding or bond funding. This resolution will clarify that the entire 20.5 million for the Fruitland Primary School is to be PEGO funding.
Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 60-2024. So moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those, yes?
This is all, the 20 million is for the PEGO funding? That's what I heard, right?
20.5, yes.
20.5, okay. All right. I'm just making sure I'm on the same page.
Sure. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Next is...
I think we're done.
Yeah.
Entertained motion to adjourn from legislative session to convene as the local health board. Got a motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now convened as the local health board of Wacomico County, Local Board of Health.
Did you go get a coffee?
I got lunch. Sorry for you all.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all, I appreciate you all having us here today. I will be giving our biannual update from the Wacomico County Health Department. I have two special guests here with me today. I have Christina Gray, who is now our Division Lead for our Planning and Assessment Division at the Health Department, and my new deputy health officer in charge of administration. Jessica Sexhour, she started in January of this year, serving 18 years with the state in Worcester County. We're happy to have her on board, and I'll let her give a little rundown of herself once we get to her part of the agenda.
Okay.
Today, we're just going to do a brief overview of some relevant data released since we last met in October. You all have a data packet or presentation there with you, so we'll follow through with that. We will cover census data related to county social determinants of health, as well as some population health updates and progress of our county's current community health improvement plan. I've also included the last year's data available, but there are lags due to reporting and the sources that we receive our data from, or I guess I shouldn't say, I made available, Christina did, as our epidemiologist. But first, I think it's good to just bring us in to alignment about what the mission of the Health Department is. It is to maximize the health and wellness of all members of the community through collaborative efforts. This being a key part of our collaborative efforts, working in conjunction with the council giving these updates and being transparent to our populace. We have a vision of healthy people through healthy communities, and we do this through a series of guiding principles, including the promotion and protection of health, viewing our work through a health equality lens, collaboration with many partners in the community, and always having a customer focus and trying our best to make a positive impact in the lives of the people we serve. If you turn to our organizational chart, we've gone through a little bit of a restructure. We roughly house about 200 employees. We fluctuate between 200 and about 210 employees at any point throughout the year. We cover eight major divisions. This will be my one-year term, pretty much. At last April, I started in my role, newly appointed Jessica, as I said, as the administrative deputy health officer, and then Christina as my lead for the Planning and Assessment Division, which is a new division for the Health Department. We've also undergone some changes and have lost a program that will be discussed further on. With that being said, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Christina, who's my epidemiologist and can answer a lot more of your data questions than I can.
Well, I originally wrote these talking points as good morning, but good afternoon. Happy to be here. I'll try to move through this relatively quickly in the interest of time. I did have an electronic format I was going to try out this time, but I just want to let everybody know, these slides for the public will be available on our website, possibly even later today. So what we're walking through, all of that will be on our website. So in front of you, you see some updates from our U.S. Census. They release the American Community Survey updates each year. And so when we look at our overall population growth, it's really not too rapid. So over the past decade, we're looking at about 4% growth, but that's not to say that the composition of our county population hasn't changed in this time. So we still see that white, non-Hispanic residents remain the majority of our county's population, but that is starting to shift. So since 2012, you're starting to see our county's Hispanic population has grown by 28%. We also have a 20% increase in residents speaking a non-English language as their primary language at home. So we know that even though our overall growth, you know, count-wise, has not really grown about 4% or so, the composition of that is changing. What we also see is another population of growth is those 65 years and older, right? So we know that in, over the next five years, baby boomers will enter that bracket, the last of the baby boomers, I think, is 1964, so they have another five years. And so far, just over the past 10 years, we've seen 65 years and older makeup go from 13% to almost 17% of our population, so we know that'll continue to grow. We will, as public health, adjust our needs based on, you know, as these populations Looking at some economic indicators from the census, we know income, poverty, housing are, you know, inextricably linked to health outcomes in the United States. Some good news, our median household income is over $72,000 now with the last update, but we know even with that $18,000 increase, we're still lagging pretty significantly behind the rest of the state and still slightly behind the rest of the country. You'll also see we have 1 in 10 residents that live below the poverty line, and, you know, we know wage increases have happened, but they've struggled to keep pace with the cost of living and recent inflation that we've seen. The National Low Income Housing Coalition published some late, their latest data shows the hourly wage to afford a modest two-bedroom house or apartment is sitting right now at We also monitor several social factors and impacts for the county on health outcomes. Of course, education is a huge one, so good news to report here. The latest census data has 91.4% of our residents with a high school degree or higher, and that is up from 89% just five years ago, so some growth in that arena. We also look at, another special population here is our veterans, and right now, we're sitting at about 6% of our residents have a veteran status. This population, of course, can be at a higher risk for some health outcomes, specifically mental health and chronic disease. Another important source of data we look at is the annual county health rankings produced by Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the University of Wisconsin Pop Health Institute. These rankings use a model of measuring how health factors impact how long we're living and how well we're living in each of our nation's counties. So right now, what this data has told us is Wacomico County is about on par with the average American county in terms of health outcomes, but we are faring a little bit worse than the rest of Maryland. So again, a lot of times, we tend, you know, when we saw that economic data, we tend to lag a little bit behind the rest of the state. We are doing well in some areas. Those include having a low proportion of uninsured residents, and we have relatively high healthcare provider ratios. So this is the number of primary care physicians, dentists, mental health practitioners relative to the number of residents that we have. So we want to have, make sure that people can have access to care. A lot of areas in this ranking where we tend to score a little lower are really related to chronic disease outcomes, so obesity, physical inactivity, and tobacco use tend to be slightly higher here in this county still compared to other areas. Switching gears a little bit, there's a next few slides go over some vital statistics that were published since we last met in October. We see that the annual number of births has remained relatively stable over the past few years. On average, over the past three years, we've had 1,262 annual average births to Wacomico County moms. Unfortunately, we do see a trend upward in some key metrics we look at for birth outcomes, including later no prenatal care, babies born at low birth weight, as well as babies born preterm. Those did start to tick higher in 2021 compared to the year prior. As far as mortality, so one of the other key vital stats, we had 1,092 deaths in 2022. Heart disease and cancer still leading the pack. This is, actually did not change even throughout COVID. COVID never went higher than the third-leading cause of death, so just as important, again, with those chronic disease risk factors that are related to both of those health outcomes, you know, that we're working with programs that are helping those, and we certainly are. In fact, heart disease and cancer comprised 42% of deaths last year, or in 2022, so almost inching towards half. And we see COVID did actually slip down to the fourth-leading cause as well. I will mention accidental deaths and fifth, those include, you know, things such as motor vehicle accidents, but can also include drug overdoses. Those are included in that category as well.
Within that, would that be also firearms, I guess?
Yes, yes.
Any inclusion of like suicide in this? Would that be relevant?
So the, there is a separate listing for suicide. It was our 11th-leading cause of death in 2021, but it actually fell out of what they consider the top 15 for 2022. So we're going in the right direction with that one, at least, but yes, it would be listed separately here. Infant mortality is another vital statistic we do look at. Some good news, very good news in this topic. We recorded five infant deaths in 2022, and this is a significant decrease from the two years prior. We also saw our average infant mortality rate decrease from 9.4 to 7.4 per thousand live births, still hovering a little bit more than the state, but we can see we're closing that gap when you compare those two five-year increments as well. All right, now kind of getting into respiratory. So this is, I think, the only slide I have on this. This is a wrap-up of the respiratory season. What you see in front of you is a graph of both last year and this year's combined, but also individual COVID, flu, and RSV hospitalization rate trend data. We, the state is monitoring this data year-round, but really May kind of marks the end of the major respiratory season. So you can see the numbers have really started to level out and bottom out, essentially. In Maryland, we see this year, which are the solid lines there, we saw a little bit more seasonality, back to normal seasonality with flu, where you see cases start to rise after Thanksgiving and peak kind of in mid-January. So last year, the season came very early, in addition to what we were already seeing with COVID and RSV. So this year, they were a little bit more spacing out of some of these conditions. Rates of hospitalization for COVID were much lower compared to last season, so good news there, and RSV remained about the same, but the peak tended to shift closer to the end of the calendar year versus mid-October, so a little after schools had started. All right, next slide is on our cancer rates and deaths, incident cases and deaths, and across several sites, you'll see Wacomico, the rate of new cancer cases has remained relatively stable, but the rates of lung and colorectal cancers have significantly decreased, so that's the green arrow down in a good way. We're also headed in generally positive direction when you look at cancer mortality. Across many of those sites, the five-year trend is statistically significant in that they are decreasing, so good news in terms of cancer mortality in the county. Unfortunately, though, declines are not what we're seeing as of last year with incidents and HIV cases. We had 19 cases of HIV diagnosed in Wacomico County, and we currently have a total of 287 residents living with HIV. Because of advancements in therapies over the years, we do see patients thankfully living longer lives, so over half of our residents living with HIV are actually over the age of 50, right? So now we see where patients are shifting, they're, you know, having the same concerns as the general population over the age of 50, and not really the, you know, it's a decreased likelihood of these AIDS-related conditions, right? So these patients are dealing with things such as cardiovascular disease, diabetes, kidney disease, so kind of generally what we see in that population as well. So something that we address, you know, in our health department programs across the Conversely, looking at STIs, it's the younger age groups that continue to drive these rates. These, what you hear, see here is the four-year trend over chlamydia and gonorrhea. The rates of these each did decline in 2022, but again, we see that that gap above the state is still relatively wide as of 2022. We did have the second highest rate of chlamydia and the third highest rate of gonorrhea in the state.
Is that per capita, or?
So, yeah, it's, yes, per 100,000 resident, so it is standardized. And I'm jumping across a lot of health topics pretty quick, but, so, now behavioral health. We see one area that we are focusing on, continuing to really look at, the programs focused on youth, is the emergent data you see here on mental health and self-harm risk factors for the county. So every few years, there is a survey, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey administered in our county middle and high schools, and on the right-hand side, that graph shows three key metrics from that survey that are asked each time, and those are feeling sad or hopeless for every day for two or more weeks so that you're kind of foregoing normal activities. Are you seriously considering attempting suicide and then making a plan for suicide? Unfortunately, you see a trend upwards here from 2016 to the 2021 data. We, you know... We, you know, among any, many reasons, the 2021 data could be reflective of some of the social isolation as well that people were feeling. The next round of the survey data comes out any day now, so once we have that, for the October meeting, I'll be able to provide an update specifically on those metrics as well.
Do you think the, do you think the foods we eat have a lot to play with it?
There is a whole host of factors that could probably go into, you know, to risk here, but what we are seeing in our emergency departments here among residents is in 2023, over half of visits for the, to the emergency room for self-harm were in that 10 to 24-year-old age group. So our programs are very specific to really have, look at reducing risk among youth, especially for mental health and suicide. Also in the behavioral health arm, we look at substance use and overdose trends, and this is the latest data we have on overdose deaths by drug type. You'll see a dashed line from '22 to '23. Only half of 2023's data has been officially published. So what you'll see here, we did, we did see declines in overdose deaths from all drugs and alcohol uses in 2022, as well as specific to opioid and fentanyl. But again, this is probably the broken record piece here. 90% of all opioid overdoses involve fentanyl. It continues to be the key driver of those deaths, whereas you see heroin deaths, which is the blue line towards the bottom, have really declined in recent years. If we were to just kind of double the numbers that we're seeing for 2023, we would be kind of on pace to see an increase compared to 2022. But again, those numbers are not finalized. I do hope to have those in October. And then finally, I just want to give a brief update on the work we're doing in the county's current community health improvement plan. So every three years, a comprehensive community health needs assessment is done in coordination with Title Health, as well as some of our neighboring counties. And then the results of this assessment guide us to prioritize certain areas that we want to improve over the next three years, so kind of our action plan. And we are about halfway, a little over halfway through the current plan at this point. Probably not a surprise, based on the data I just threw very quickly at you, but our three priority areas are access and health equity, behavioral health, and chronic disease and wellness. These strategies and priority areas were approved with our county's Local Health Improvement Coalition. And I should also note that our next cycle for needs assessment will start hopefully later this year. So I hope to present more on that in October. This council, of course, is a set of stake, very important stakeholders for that process, as well as liaisons to the constituents that we would want in focus groups and things like that as we do that process. So under access to care, our first priority area, we have two major goals. That is to increase equitable access to healthcare and provide education and promote awareness of health equity, including policy recommendations. We see this, under this priority area, we are working on two strategies. One is actually emphasizes the impact of community health workers to address social determinants of health. This is surprisingly not a, this is more of a recent push across, actually, the nation's public health departments, really emphasizing the importance of our community health workers and linking our residents to care coordination. So at this point, we really don't have a baseline of who's doing this work in our county or neighboring counties with the service area. So the Local Health Improvement Coalition and Wycomico County Health Department are taking the lead to kind of get a baseline of what's going on. The aim from there is to hopefully establish an association or community of practice for community health workers in the area, and so strengthening best practices and, you know, their overall network. Earlier this spring, our LHC also established a subcommittee for taking the lead on activities related to health equity in the county. The first step of this was reviewing and selecting a health equity framework that the coalition will use as a blueprint to address health inequities moving forward. Second priority area is behavioral health. This has one overarching goal, and that is to improve behavioral health through prevention, treatment, and recovery. This is, recent work by the health department include increasing the number of trainings for mental health first aid that we're providing, not just the number of trainings in general, but also the number of people served within those trainings. We've also increased the number of Narcan trainings, among those with lived and social experience. So these could be people that have experienced prior overdoses. It could be family members, friends of those connected to overdose, essentially those at a higher risk of needing to use the reversal drug. We've increased the academic detailing visits among county prescribers, and as well as establishing a baseline survey with our LBHA providers in the community to look at the types of limited English proficiency services that they're able to provide. Again, speaking to the changes we're seeing in the county's population composition. And finally, we have our chronic disease and wellness priority area with the goals of reducing the prevalence and mortality rates of chronic disease, as well as supporting healthy lifestyles and wellness to reduce the risk of chronic disease. Doing a lot of work in this area. We are applying for even more funds in this area, which is exciting. We have increased the number of diabetes prevention programs and cohorts that we're able to provide in the county, including those in other languages, which is very good. I know we have one going in Spanish, and I believe partnering to get a DPP cohort for those that speak Haitian Creole as well. The, we have expanded the number of community gardens in the county, helping to increase food access, but as well as establishing a space for social connections, as well as areas that we can come in and provide chronic disease education to community members. We have continued our Healthy Lifestyles Challenge program, and that's in partnership with the YMCA. And we also met our, as an agency, our colorectal screening goals for FY24, and we already have a waitlist pretty solid for FY25. So speaking to, again, some of those areas on the cancer outcome page, that we want to continue to see those numbers go down. And I'm going to switch gears and...
Can I have Paul's ask first? I know we're tight on time, but just real quickly, first of all, it's good to see that looked like they lower alcohol use. I mean, I've heard that, we heard before that when canips would become available, that we might see a drop in alcohol, and I don't know if that's related, but regardless, it's good to see less people using alcohol.
Yep.
The second thing was, do you have anything as far as data on the vaccines? People have asked about HPV or any of these, our uptake as our Wycomico County or our region, are we, is that still something that's, do we have a high, fair amount of, or do we track that? I don't even know.
Yeah, we do track that, and we can provide that information. We just have to go back and pull it from our data sources. We don't have it here with us currently, but we do have a pretty adequate vaccine uptake, especially for like flu vaccinations and things like that.
Very good, okay. And then last thing I had, I've had people ask me also about the access to healthcare and the quality, I guess, the access and the quality of that, of healthcare, especially for the LGBTQ and transgender communities. Anything you want to comment on that?
Sure, and actually, not specific to that population in general, but the health equity framework that I referenced, that our LHC subcommittee is working through, that is one of the aims of using frameworks like this, right? So we can really strategize if there are populations that are specifically lacking access to care, among others, because things get lost in the aggregate, right? Right now, we know, of course, our, we have a growing Haitian population due to, you know, the unfortunate conditions in that country right now, but that would be another area that we could certainly look at. But yes, that would be in that priority area.
I just want to also say, you all are doing a great job. I love the fact that these numbers are actually looking great, like actually going down in many ways for us. And Wycomico's had a lot of challenges unlike other areas. So really great work to all, you all and the broader communities just making that happen.
Thank you.
I just have a really brief update, because we're shifting into some of our internal health department programs and things like that. So sadly, the health department did have to close our psychiatric rehabilitation program, which served adults, adolescents, and children with some psychiatric needs. We, at the time of closure, had four staff members that were a part of that program, and we were able to retain each of those positions, and we have reassigned them to other projects. So excited. There were no layoffs as a result of us having to close the program. And the clients we had at the time, 39 clients, within our program that were offered additional providers in our area to be able to get connected to care. So they were each given a list of, you know, providers to choose from, and between their psychiatric rehabilitation program workers and their mental health outpatient provider network, they were able to get connected to services and retain them if they wanted to in some capacity. I believe those are, you know, some of the major highlights that we had. You know, it's always sad to see, you know, if a program has to end for any reason. We are very grateful for our community partners that also have psychiatric rehabilitation programs so that the continuity of care can continue for the patients that were involved, so.
And then moving on to the update on the land side evaluations. So I provided you with May's update. As you can see, looking at septic permitting, year-to-date, or fiscal year-to-date, we've completed 101 septic permitting applications. The majority of those are for replacement systems and new construction, with only nine being for tank-only replacements. And then we had our first wet season in two years. So in the past two, I guess, three years now, we've completed 26 land evaluations. This, just in this past couple months, we completed 92 land evaluations because we finally had a wet season, we're adequately, we were able to adequately assess the properties. We have closed out all the ones that were outstanding from '19 and '20, and we have just a few that we did not get to through '21, but we are currently working through getting those completed. And then we will have a system in place that we will keep this up and adequately assess, get properties ready for hopefully another wet season this upcoming November, December. If you look towards our application closure or timeframe, we're looking right around 49 days. This has drifted a little later. That is due to the fact that we set a priority on completing land evaluations because there was, there was people in the community that were waiting two, three years to have that work done. So they became our priority during this previous couple months. Before the wet season, we're sitting right around 30 days from applications to middle to completion. You will see that the open applications is at 123 days. This is not due to non-work or anything like that. This is waiting for certain requirements from the contractors, the landowners, to submit the work for us to complete and finalize. Additionally, there was legislation passed this current session where we will be providing updates about permitting timeframes to the Maryland Department of the Environment. And with that, we are working with them as a pilot organization for their new online permitting process. And that's, doesn't necessarily change day-to-day for somebody coming to apply. They'll still come in person and apply to us. This is for, for the contractors to submit their work online for us to review and get a quicker permit to them, so the work progresses at a quicker rate.
Okay. Any questions?
Great work.
Yeah, I, I still receive calls. It seems like out of all the calls I may receive, I get more calls in reference to health issues and septic issues than I do anywhere else. And I have two outstanding right now that I probably would have to refer to you later, not today in public. But it does seem as if, you know, there still seem to be some of these stories where they say, well, this has been a six-year process, things like that. Are we still looking at things like that? I know, is MES still working with the?
No, we are currently fully staffed. We have one, two, three. We have two fully licensed environmental health specialists. We have one trainee that is nearing his completion and will become a fully licensed environmental health specialist. We just hired another trainee. We now have a land side supervisor, as well as the division director for the environmental health division. So we are adequately moving through. If there are delayed processes, please let me know, and I can look into that. To my knowledge, if it's a land evaluation, that would be the longest tenured thing, just because of the need for a wet season to adequately map out what the water tables are at their highest point, because we do not want to issue a permit for something that we know is going to end up being a failure when we do get rain. And that's something we want to avoid at all costs.
Is there any way to work around, to do a workaround as far as that's concerned, like waiting just months and months and months to do that test?
Right now, with the Kilmarnock regulations, there's not, and that would, that would be a conversation between MDE and the Environmental Health Department and myself on if there are any adequate ways we could adjust that. We do have some here recently that we had an informal conference with that we're doing backhoe holes, which gives us a better idea of what the soil composition is, because currently we do auger holes, and when you do an auger hole, it all gets kind of combined together, so you don't get the great striation or delineation in the soil composition. But when you do a backhoe hole, you're better able to see what the structure of the soil looks like, and to see if there's any oxidation factors that show where potential rust or water lines may be. So pretty much across the county, you need at least 24 inches of separation from the bottom of your trench to the top of the water table. And other, and that's just some. Other locations within the county, it's 48 inches, and that just depends on what the ground protection regulations are, the GPR.
Okay. Any other questions? We appreciate your taking the time and your reports very much. I think the new hires is a very, very good sign, so we appreciate that as well.
Thank you. We're very happy.
Thank you all very much. Great work.
I'm taking a motion to adjourn from the local Board of Health and reconvene legislative session. Second, holders in favor?
Hi.
Afternoon, Mr. Benson. How are you?
We're here for Legislative Bill 2024-03, and it is an act to amend the Wycomico County Code, Chapter 179, regulations for parks and recreation facilities.
Taking a motion from council to introduce Legislative Bill 03-2024.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Where is it?
Mr. Miller, you want to come forward?
Yes.
This is, which one is this for? It's been such a long meeting.
It's to amend the county code, Chapter 179, regulations for parks and recreational facilities.
Yeah, what, so is this for all, I'm trying to figure out what we're going to amend, like what are we, what are we adding?
So we've updated, this hasn't been done for quite a long time, so we've updated language, I think it's 2008, since the last time it was updated, so updated language on things like drones, which weren't a thing last time we updated this, hours of operation, added some language that would make facilities that are open past dusk, where facilities would be accessible, so marinas, for example, would be one, where people could access their boats and whatnot. So this was just a general update that we worked with the commission and did a work session, so.
That's right. Comes back to me now. I brought up the comment about the firearms, about legal owners that have, you know, an HQL and a carry permit. The way I read this right now is, let's just say I have a carry permit, and I walk on Pemberton Park, and I have my daughter with me, and somebody tries to mug me, and I try to defend myself and my daughter, I'm going to jail, because what I read here is, "No persons other than law enforcement officers shall carry, possess, discharge firearms on park property." Nobody wants that anyway, but criminals don't follow that. That's what I'm just saying. And I don't know if, I mean, I asked... And I don't know if, I mean, I asked if that could be looked at, and I don't know if it was.
Yeah. And what is in the rules now is legally appropriate.
Crazy. Sorry? I'm sorry?
I said, what is in the rules as they're written now is what's legally appropriate, which would be law enforcement.
Right. Okay.
But not other people.
So it would be illegal in the state of Maryland, I guess, for, like, there's nothing that we can do to alter that, so that a legal citizen, because, I mean, I go to church and I carry a gun, you know what I mean? Like, I can't walk down into park and carry, you know, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just curious if that's something that you can do in Maryland? Or if not, if we can't, then I'm not going to entertain the idea, let's just move on. But if you can, I think it's worth entertaining.
Maryland law or county law?
That's fine.
It's county law, based on these rules.
So we can change that law?
If you want to.
If we want to.
But I'm not recommending that.
Why? Why?
I think the decision of the committee that put this together was that firearms in parks is not in the public interest.
But they are if there's an active shooter in the park.
It depends on who's.
And that should involve law enforcement.
Right. But if you're. Be there.
But if you're walking down in Pemberton Park in the middle of nowhere, and somebody pulls a gun on you and says, I want your money and I want your kid.
Give it to him.
I want your kid. How about that? Your little, your granddaughter, you know? You gonna let him take your granddaughter?
If I fell unsafe in the park, I wouldn't go there.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, you're gonna have a lot, well, it's already in law, so. How many incidents do we have right now? All, not, not many, right? But what I'm saying is, the opportunity.
Have we had any incidents of like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah. So it's not an issue currently? Yeah, I didn't think it was an issue. It's just, you know, it's just a technicality, so.
And of course, just speaking the obvious, that anyone carrying a, you know, seeing somebody else carrying a weapon, even if it is concealed, you know, doesn't exactly make people feel comfortable.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I guess the question is for the council, do you want to change this, to change this to say, except for those with a concealed carry permit, a lawful sealed carry permit, I would be, I would entertain that if anybody else would, on the council.
I'd entertain it.
Wow.
I would entertain it.
I wouldn't.
We got four votes here. So we got three votes already, James, you gonna jump in on it, or?
Yeah.
Your idea.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't support.
I think, I think it would be a good idea, though, to have the public have an opportunity to speak on that, if we're gonna just make a motion to add it.
This is an introduction. You can certainly make an amendment to the introduction, to the legislative bill, and we could pass it inclusive of the bill now as amended, as an introduction, and then it would certainly go, we'd have more processes, public processes afterwards.
I would like.
Probably better do it now than later.
I would like to make a motion to amend the amendment of the regulations to allow law-abiding citizens that have a concealed carry permit to be on park land.
How do you know that the people that's carrying a gun is law-abiding?
How you know criminals?
Doesn't have a permit.
How you know criminals aren't?
What I'm saying is, is that we're so gun-happy, and you carry a gun in church, something's, something's wrong there, and you carry a gun in the house of the Lord. So I think something's wrong there, that you're gonna carry a gun in the grocery store, you're gonna carry a gun here.
There's people that carry guns all the time.
I mean, I walk the streets all the time. I live in what you call the hood. I never was feared. No one never attacked me. So when you're gonna carry a gun, that means you're gonna carry a gun, they're gonna hear this on the PAC fourteen, that's, oh, we can carry a gun. How many people gonna be carrying guns in the, in the park?
They already doing it. All I'm saying is, you're gonna prevent a legal citizen from being a criminal. And that's what I'm standing on.
Well, that means you would shoot somebody just because it said, give me your money.
I'm not saying, you know, when you take a concealed carry class, hold on, wait, 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 wait. When you take a concealed carry class in the state of Maryland, you have hours of training, and you have a weight of responsibility upon you. Because if you have to act in defending yourself, you're going to jail. You're going to jail right now. If you defend yourself, I have to have insurance to defend myself. I have to call an attorney if I want to defend myself. I'm not trying to give a criminal another edge to the sword. Let's, I'm saying, just, let's just remove this piece, so that when I go to, when somebody goes to court for defending themselves and their, their children in, in a, at a park, that a lawyer can't say, well, it says right here in Wycomica County Code that it's illegal for you to carry a firearm. And then bam, you're in trouble right there. I want to remove that, because they're already law-abiding citizens that carry firearms. They've taken the classes, they're responsible, they have to continually take classes, and I just.
I don't believe in people carrying firearms in public places. It's my belief.
I agree with you there.
And you have a right to carry a gun if you want to carry a gun. I don't believe in carrying guns in a public place, the house of the Lord, and, and grocery stores, and everything, because you're in the fear of your life that somebody's gonna mug you.
I don't.
Somebody can just blow your car and put a bomb underneath your car. Anything can happen.
I don't disagree.
You can go in an accident, you can go right out here, just like this family, right today, a mother and father and a baby got killed on the, on the bypass. It's no guarantee that the thing's not gonna happen to you.
Yeah.
You're just carrying a gun, you be carrying a gun because you got the right. We're not in Wild, Wild West. I know some people want to be in Wild, Wild West, but that's not how we should be living. And I'm not, I don't support it. I mean, four or five people can agree with it, carrying a gun in a public park where children are, and somebody get drunk, who's got a concealed weapon, be shooting up in the air and all that kind of stuff.
Shani, we're talking about legal citizens.
I don't care.
No, 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 listen, listen. You've got this all wrong. Criminals are already doing it. They're already carrying guns wherever they want to carry them. A law-abiding citizen is going to, they follow the law. It's a law-abiding citizen.
I doubt it. I doubt it.
You doubt it? They do it all the time right now.
Well, how you know criminals are, how do you, how can you justify a criminal? How can you tell who's a criminal in the park?
Can you give me a statistic on how many law-abiding citizens shoot people? None, because they follow the law.
Go there.
Those are the ones that.
I probably could give you one, some.
All right, all right. We need to just move on from this.
That's done. I don't care what y'all do, I'm not supporting the bill.
That's good. We understand that. A question I have, Mr. Wilber, is this, instead of trying to fabricate an amendment right now, should we maybe forward this to legal, so that you, because it is gun control, and, you know, should we not make this illegal, address this with the legal department first, so that you can fashion an amendment, or that you recognize what Mr. Nguyen is asking for?
I've got it, yeah.
Okay. And we want to make sure, as far as Comor is concerned, I guess Comor, that it follows in line with state statute.
Sure.
And we could possibly reflect the fact that it's already legal by state statute, and we are being, you know, in concert with that. We'll include it. And then bring it back for a vote at that time, instead of amending everything right now.
We'll do.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everything's legal. We don't want to pass something that we're not supposed to pass, you know?
Do it, you're fine.
Yeah, okay.
Should he withdraw his motion, since he made?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I don't think we ever got a second, did we?
No, we never did, did we?
Either way, withdraw the motion, fine, thank you very much. Any other questions? There was one section here, one seventy-nine eleven, where the current law requires the request for a special permit with the recommendation from the county to go to the county council. And then, the proposed change replaces the county council with the county executive. I guess the question here is that, should that not be requested with the county executive and approval from the county council?
Yeah, this, and this may go to the later discussion. I think, I think the recommendation is just for the pace of things, when you get a facility rental request. We do have forms, we do have request forms that people fill out that are pretty standard. And just for the sake of expediting those requests, that's why that change was made. But we can certainly follow any process.
But these special requests are for alcohol and gaming.
Right.
I mean, it's, they're not, it's not to have a bounce house. It's for alcohol and gaming, which is items that I think would, the council would have complaints lodged about, potentially, if it.
Understood. If you could address that as well.
In what way?
Well, to make it inclusive of the county council as well.
Okay.
I mean, we meet pretty much every two weeks. I don't think how that's gonna really hold up too much of the process. And I guess, Mr. Wilber, that would be something, if you could put that in. Is this the proper format to do it, whereas they changed the legislative bill that we introduced, and then we approve it, or does it need to be done right now?
Well, the vote technically to introduce hasn't been made yet.
Why don't we set it for the next meeting, and we'll do the introduction then, with the revised language?
You could do that, or you can always make those motions to amend the bill at the, when we have the public hearing.
So the motion that we're gonna make today, we'll approve this bill as is, knowing that when it comes back to the table, we will have amendments prepared by legal council, so that we can.
Yeah, if you make the motion to introduce the bill, it starts the clock and it gets the process rolling.
So these amendments will be, will take place at the next meeting when we do the, or the meeting when we do the final introduction, just as long as the public is aware that what's being, but what they need to read and be aware of is the amended sections.
Yeah, Mr. Wilber, if you can send those to me, what I can do is, when we post that bill online, we can add that list of amendments to it as proposed amendments.
Great, okay, that way the public knows. The real bill.
In traffic, Y, the letter Y, before, yeah. And number three in that, no person shall operate a motorized vehicle, no, wait a minute. No, wait a minute, go to number four. No person shall operate any motorized vehicle on park property other than on a road or street to which public access has not been prohibited. Can you explain that?
It's worded in the negative, but it's intended that vehicles are only supposed to go where they're permitted. So if we were to block off a street for whatever reason, they can't do that, but otherwise, they should be restricted to those areas where motor vehicles are supposed to go. We could reword that if you want, because it's, it's kind of, it's written in the negative, and it could be, so we could, we could reword that, is that, I think the intent, Mr. Wilber, you can correct me, but the intent is that vehicles are to stay where they're supposed to be, which is roads, and unless we were to, for whatever reason, have to block off a road for construction or whatever else.
We'll say, only where permitted, as opposed to the prohibited.
Yeah, it was kind of, there was another one down here about trespassing, I wanted, I'm trying to find that, find that one.
I'm looking for it, Joe. Section one seventy-nine three also, it references when you're having discussions about cannabis. I think it might be best to just have a statement that says that smoking cannabis in any park is prohibited, and then say, you know, in line with, with all local, state, and federal laws. I think it should be very specific, and then concluding with, in addition to all, in accordance with all local, state, and federal laws. It's a little more succinct. Joe?
I haven't found, I haven't found what I was looking for. Anybody else got anything till I find it?
Joe, you could always come back, after it's introduced, when, when we actually put the bill on the table.
It wasn't, it wasn't that big of a.
At the, at the next meeting, when we actually have a vote on the legislative bill itself, and if you find it, then we could amend it then.
Joe, would it be section A, one seventy-nine three? It's hours of operation? No? All right.
That'll give you time to look for it, Joe. Any other discussions on the introduction of the legislative bill three dash two thousand twenty-four? All those in favor of the introduction, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, legislative bill, the introduction of legislative bill zero-three two thousand twenty-four passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please state your name, your county residence, your concerns. Keep in mind not to try to repeat too many comments, and you do have a three-minute limit. Mr. Taylor?
Robert Taylor, still, still a resident of the city and county. Here early, first one up, because I told my wife, I took her up about an hour ago. I'm going to tell her, and Lynn Sandy will appreciate this, I went to a county council meeting and a marathon broke out. And guess who I'm gonna blame? But anyway, just a couple of quick ones on that last bill. The idea about cannabis in accordance with all these other laws and regulations, that might be just such a mishmash, it might be unintelligible to an officer, whoever's going to enforce it. I think you might want to take a look at that, because sometimes you can say too much, sometimes less is more. But getting on, I was also going to comment on some of your work sessions, but I'm gonna skip over that, I've sent you stuff, and I think other people will address that. But I want to get back to what you did on the library and the Warden Museum. And what you've done is, you've started down a slippery slope. And of course, it was well orchestrated by the Greater Salisbury Committee, the university, the library, et cetera, I realize that, the elite. But what's going to happen is, and as Mr. Benson mentioned, there may be other times, and there will be, where it comes before the council for more decisions. But at that time, it's going to be, well, back in May, you approved this. You can't say no now. So what you've done is, you've started something without thinking it through. Now, yeah, they have to have the lease in place before they can get the a hundred million bucks from the state. I realize there are things like that. But let's have the thing planned out about what it's to be, what the a hundred million is to be used for. Now, a comment was, and I've mentioned about the parking lots, I won't go into that again, I got my little drawing here, I think I've sent it to you. There's already a tremendous problem if these apartments are built. Now, somebody mentioned, well, the mayor, Randy Taylor, he's talking to them about that, they're having a big work session. The problem is, the city, under Jake Day and Heath, have already sold all the parking lots. They don't have, in other words, they're out of the game in terms of ownership. It's too damn late. And that's our problem here. And until this gets worked out, there's a potential for turning what is gonna, a debacle in the making, into a real disaster, if they put that performing arts center in. Now, yeah, and I mentioned this to somebody out in the hall from the university, if you got a hundred million bucks, condemn the three parking lots. Get Brad Gillis and them out of there. They own it now, they paid three hundred and seventy-five thousand for them. So we already have an established market price that's less than a year old. Now, sure, they're gonna want more, but they can condemn them. They may, they may want to condemn the Cannon Building. I mean, that, that's certainly in the works. How are they gonna build something of that size on the library footprint? Can't be done, unless they want to go five or six stories up. So that needs to be worked out, and you didn't do that. You jumped into it hook, line, and sinker, without working it through. And frankly, at the next meeting, you ought to rescind what you did today on that resolution, and get the thing worked out.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. Jim Atkins, Wycomica County. With all due respect to the council and the council president, what just happened with the regulations for parks and regulations is why I have been asking for a year to change the way public comments are addressed, and people being able to speak and ask questions. Councilman Nguyen addressed the concealed carry. One of the things that I had addressed with Mr. Miller, that according to the briefing book and what I read, was not changed, is sunrise-to-sunset limitation at the marinas. So you're telling me if I want to go fishing at four o'clock in the morning, that I'm violating the law because I'm launching my boat prior to sunset, sunrise? And you're gonna find me for it? There needs to be a little bit of common sense. We've got to be able, you've got the West Side Fire Department holds a fishing tournament every September, prior to sunrise, there are between seventy-five and a hundred boats being launched from that marina. Are you gonna stand there and find those people because they're there before sunrise? Or they come in after sunset when it's dark, because the marina's only open from sunrise to sunset? But you won't let us ask questions. Now that I've got that off my chest, let me come down here a little bit.
Tell us how you really feel.
County library. I'm all in favor of the county getting a new library. Certainly needs one. But a few concerns that I was hoping somebody would bring up in the library, and they didn't, and I'm gonna start talking fast, because my clock's running. Maybe we need to build the hundred-million-dollar cultural and arts center out on Shoemaker Drive, next to the Warden Museum. Make it all one big thing. You're getting ready to give Salisbury University of Maryland, prime property in downtown Salisbury, giving it to them, because they're going to let you lease a piece of property. What happens after 10 years if they decide not to renew the lease? What happens after 20 years if they decide not to renew the lease? What happens after 30 years? You don't have a building, you don't have a library. Lease is up, time's over. Okay, look at that. What's the cost of putting a satellite building in downtown Salisbury for the library? There's costs associated with all this, please keep an eye on it, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Hi, Linda Lufman from Delmar. Most of you know me here. This is in regards to closed session regarding the county executive offices. I have not drank the Juilli Juice. I did not support her, I did not vote for her. What I did vote for was roughly 18 years ago, a executive form of government for this county. This is not about Julie Giordano. This is about the county council usurping the power away from the people of the county. The people already elected less than 20 years ago, the system of government that we wanted for Wycomico. It should be power to the people, but y'all are trying to undo the will, the voice, and the votes of the people of what we already duly elected to this county. I'm urging each of you not to go forward with abolishing or a referendum to abolish the executive offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lufman.
Good afternoon, Joe Venosa, Wycomico County. First off, I just want to say that is probably the shortest public comment we're going to hear all day. So congratulations to Ms. Lufman, bravo. I'll try my best. So yeah, I'm taking the opposite view of that. I wanted to express my support for the effort to put on the ballot and let the people once again decide if this form of government, or this current iteration of it, is the most appropriate. Wycomico County has existed far, far earlier than 2006, when this system was established. I think the track record, not only of Ms. Giordano's disastrous scandal-plagued administration has been an issue, but going really back to its creation, the ill-defined role of Mr. Pollitt and the issues that came up in following administrations have proven to be far more trouble than they're worth. I'm a believer that power is best exercised when it's diffused. As a historian, I could tell you the one thing I think we all may agree on, regardless of our backgrounds or politics, is a concentration of power is a very dangerous thing, particularly when it's ill-defined. When you've got a role that is being usurped as it is now, where public money, contracts, MOUs, things of that nature, are being weaponized in such a way. And again, it doesn't have anything to do with this particular county executive, even though it is in many ways a dumpster fire. The concept behind it, even if you had the greatest county executive who followed the law, even if you did have that, it would still be problematic. I think what you're doing is allowing the public, the people, to once again have a voice in that issue. You know, and if it passes, it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't, but let the people decide. Put it on the ballot, let the taxpayers and voters address the issue again. We've had 18 years, almost 20 years of this experiment. I think a lot of people would argue it's been far more trouble, far more money than it's worth, beyond just the executive costs, the lawsuits, the frivolousness of the current situation, has held our county back. I mean, how much time have you, gentlemen and lady, and administrators spent having to put out fires rather than progress the county forward? Think about the things we could have been doing rather than this last several years of all this trouble. So I implore you to, you know, remain steadfast, allow the people a chance to vote on it, and let the democratic principle of the county prevail. I think it's been very heartening to see people of different backgrounds and views, you know, come together on this issue. This is something that unites people of all different political backgrounds. I believe a lot of people in the county would like to voice, to revote, this most important issue. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Venosa.
Good afternoon, Mike Goldberg, Delmar, Maryland. Nationwide, we are a house divided, but here in Wycomico County, Democrats and Republicans are uniting to an extent I've rarely seen, and we're united in our opposition to the county executive form of government. Do not be fooled by contrived straw polls and expressions of opinion falsely presented as facts being conveyed by certain unscrupulous political operatives on social media. They are not reflective of public sentiment and are only intended to bolster a county executive who is increasingly unpopular. For 18 years, we have lived with the county executive form of government. During that time, we have witnessed the decline of our manufacturing base and the well-paying jobs they once supported, static or declining population growth, and diminishing economic prosperity relative to the rest of Maryland. The experiment with our current form of county government has been failing since its, since its inception. The time has come to reinstitute a councilmatic form of government with a professional, experienced, and competent county administrator appointed by the county council, someone who understands finance, real estate, and organizational management. We are presently led by a county executive who woefully lacks these essential skill sets. Someone who, I'm sorry, we are saddled with someone who refuses to work cooperatively with the county council and demonstrates contempt for county employees and her constituents alike. Yet she always claims to be the victim. Transparency in our county government died with the county executive form of government, and under the current regime has achieved a new low, while the cost of operating the executive branch of the county government is soaring. Too much authority has been vested in the office of the county executive, and it is being misused. Wycomico must embrace a more democratic form of government that decentralizes authority with day-to-day management placed in the hands of a professional administrator who answers to the legislative body. Thus, I implore the county council to approve the resolution to place a referendum on the ballot this November, amending the county charter by eliminating the office of county executive. Let the people decide this issue, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Good afternoon, everybody. Earl Campbell, Delmar, Maryland, and I'm owner of Research Row undercover. And I'm against everything he just said. For starters, back with Charter revision number 579, question A, was posed for the citizens of Wycomico County. The results were 19,506 for, 14,136 against. They've already voted for this once. Are we going to go through this every couple of years until we finally get someone that'll say, okay, well, maybe we'll, we'll get rid of it? It's kind of like supervisor shopping when you're at unemployment, you know, you don't, you don't get the answer from one boss, you go to the next, and the next, and the next. This past weekend, I kept hearing everybody on the council saying that, you know, the public has spoken, the public has spoken, and they were telling us this is what they want. So respectfully, I put up a poll, and while we can say they're straw polls, or we can say they're invalid, and I agree with what some people are saying, there's people in there that aren't from this area, 100% agree with everything that's everybody said. There were 13% of that poll that voted to keep the executive position. 13% that were not from Wycomico County. They either weren't from Wycomico County, or they were a fake page, because I can tell both. Additionally, the same way, going the other way. There was 13% identically that were either not from Wycomico County, or were the fake page. Those results were 1,916 votes as of this morning when I left my house. 1,717 votes were to keep the position. 199 said get rid of the position. Again, that was at 9:00 when I left my house this morning. That's nearly 90%, 89.7% were in favor of keeping the county position. Now, I don't care where you look, you can look at my page, if you don't like my page, you could even look at Mr. Shane Baker's page the other day when he posted it. The overwhelming amount of comments that are coming in are to keep this position. Therefore, I will respectfully ask that you reconsider, withdraw the resolution, and start acting like adults to work together with the county executive. If she fails the county, you vote her out. You don't get rid of the position. Anyone, it's a business owner on this page, that's, anyone, a business owner on this council here. If someone doesn't do their job, you don't get rid of the position. You terminate that person. And that's what we do as voters. We decide that, not you. That's all I got to say.
Hello, my name's Joe White, I'm a resident of Wycomico County. Later on in your work session after lunch, you're, you're going to take up, in your work session, the idea of, of putting a referendum to the voters, not deciding yourself whether or not we should keep the county executive or not. I'm in support of putting the referendum on the vote. This country has a history, a good history, over time, of when we see something that's not working, making it back. Take, you know, going back, do a look through. We weren't always the Constitution, we were the Articles of Confederation at one time, and even our own constitution's been amended 27 times. Sometimes there is a change, but it should be done by the voters, not by any one council, or not by any one person. I don't want this to be a referendum on our current executive, because I still support our executive to do the best for our county. But in the last 18 years, we've had four different executives from different backgrounds. We've had career politicians, we've had a business owner who I would either consider a friend or at least a close acquaintance, and an educator. I don't think any of them have actually been as successful as we can be. I don't think any of them have been failures. These are not bad people. But the system right now is not accountable, and I can give you some specific examples, some of which we've seen today. Negotiating with the FOP should be one of our highest priorities, not just for our own safety, but to take care of those who take care of us. Making anything that's that important a backburner issue without the ability of six other folks on the council to step up and say, in a public forum like we're here today, is not okay. It's not okay to sign 364-day MOUs to get around the spirit of the law. And I also see on your work session that you, as a group, are going to try to mitigate that, and I think that that's a waste of time, by just simply getting rid of motorsports. The power should be with the people. In the last year and a half since I've been coming here, there's a lot more people here. So I think you have a county that is involved, and I also think you're going to have people who vote on both sides. But it's time to put that to a vote. My last example, well, I have two other last examples, and I can get to them quickly. One is on the funding of the Fruitland Elementary School, or Primary School, which is very important. And all the times we've talked about reserve funds and bonds and interest rates, no one's actually talked about why the school costs that much money. Now, maybe it can't, but I think the responsible thing to the taxpayers is that we at least talk about it. And the last one is the fire service agreement, which was, at the time, done unilaterally, and now you all are in a pinch, you can either vote for it or against it, but discussion isn't going to happen, unfortunately. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm getting shaky hungry, so I can't talk long. But I have two things I want to talk about, and I am actually getting shaky hungry. I do support the effort to eliminate...
I'm sorry, for the public, we do know your, your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Mary, I'm sorry, I'm Mary Hubner, I live in Salisbury. I do support the effort to eliminate the office of the county executive. I moved back here to Salisbury in 2017 and was aware of issues with the county executive at that time, but I didn't get involved until Ms. Giordano decided to run for that office. I really am getting shaky. I wrote to her at that time and asked her that if she were elected, if she would not take the job, as I didn't feel she was qualified. Her background was teaching, not any sort of government position, and I was also aware of a number of financial difficulties she had. It feels uncomfortable, if not wrong, for anyone with financial issues to be in public office, whether it's county, city, or whatever. These persons are susceptible to any number of situations that may or may not be good for their place of employment and the people they represent. She responded that if she were elected, it would be the will of the electorate, and she would take the job. Since that time, a number of issues have arisen that have proved my fears to be true. This county cannot afford to continue to elect people who are not qualified and have no business being in a position that is responsible for governing the whole county. The county council does an excellent job and doesn't need the amount of additional stress, work, and disrespect they have received since Ms. Giordano has been in office. I strongly support the elimination of the position of the county executive. Second, I'm the president of the Tri-County Bird Club, and I, we're working on a project that we, we are birding, trying to find, breeding birds in different county blocks. And one of my county blocks is Connolly Mill. I did not know there was any county land in that area, and it would have really helped my statistics. And the reason I'm lugging this big old book, it's not just any, anything at all. We, we look, we are looking, we do a lot of research for each bird. It involves a lot of work, it's not, and it's a five-year project. The property is vital, this property, Connolly Mill, is vital to this area as is. It should not be used for events like the Jeep Safari. If it were turned into a park, I can guarantee that birders near and far would come to visit this area. And it is much better to have visitors who come to walk and enjoy the area rather than drive over it and do damage to it. A member of my club wrote to Mr. Culver in 2016 regarding Pirate's Wharf, that birding is, and this is in 2016, birding is a $50 billion industry of which Maryland is estimated to receive approximately $1 billion. And Wycomico County is one of the prime birding locations in Maryland. Thank, oh, my biggest gripe is about this situation is that people from outside the county can come and use this land, and I'm a taxpayer and I can't go on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Good afternoon, I'm Sean McHugh, Pittsville, Maryland. Couple of things that kind of find it a little disheartening that we recognize law enforcement officers, as we do across this nation this week with a proclamation, and then we vote down in the same 20, 30 minutes collective bargaining agreement because we don't understand how actuaries work. But I guess you just don't know what you don't know. So I'll leave it at that. The charter amendments, correct me if I'm wrong, when it was first introduced, I was still in high school, and I lived in Pennsylvania, so I didn't know the whole story behind it. But it was citizen-generated, signatures were gotten to get it on the, as a referendum on the ballot. Now, it's driven by a legislative body that wants to put it on the ballot for a vote to the citizens, and I'm all for that democratic process. However, flip the coin, the executive can't propose legislation, as she's an executive and not a legislator, for term limits to be on the ballot for a referendum. So I think there's two sides to that, and this is an appearance of, that it's malicious. I know that there have been, of course, dealings with the council and the executive, and I have nothing against how things are being operated. I just wish everyone can get along for the greater good of the county, because everyone that comes to these meetings, and even you as residents, deserve better. And it's not, it doesn't have to be an adversarial relationship. I just, what I would ask is, obviously, to not consider the charter, proposed charter amendments, and if the will of the people or the gather the signatures and do the work as it was done before, to have that on there through that process, that I would encourage that, and let the will of the people... that and let the will of the people be what it be, as many have said before. And I would say the same thing if there should be term limits, that the signatures be gathered for that. And as a person that holds office, and I'm not in here speaking in that capacity, I'm for term limits even for the position that I'm in. So, thank you for your time and everything you've done this morning and afternoon.
Thank you, President McHugh.
Hi, my name is Mikel Dahlien, I live in Wacomiko County. While a pressing concern looms over the county, my plea today isn't about the role of the county executive. It's about a promise broken, a vision betrayed, and a community disregarded. It's about Connolly Mill Park. This land isn't just a plot on a map for residents of Shadow Hills, it's part of our lives. We worked with previous owners to keep it safe. We partnered with the former executive Bob Culver's team to secure its donation. Wacomiko was promised a passive-use park with lakes formed by mining, a place for all to enjoy. We held up our end of the bargain. We supported the donation enduring the noise and disruption of mining for almost a decade. We did this for the value of the soil, for the future park, for the preservation of the ecosystem and the watersheds. We did it for the good of Wacomiko County. Ironically, some council members questioned if the land could be used for off-roading during the original donation, but Steve Miller of Parks and Rec and Weston Young of the county executive's team explained to many reasons it wasn't suitable. Taking their advice, the council agreed on the vision of a park for hiking, kayaking, and connecting with nature. That vision held until the current county executive signed an MOU with LiveWire Inc. She did this to bypass public and council input. She claims to have notified us, but that's simply not true. We have had to pull teeth to get any information at all. We've been stonewalled, misled, and even received intimidating phone calls. How is this acceptable? She has received volumes of letters and calls, including those from well-respected nonprofit and citizen organizations. She has seen our petition with 845 signers in less than two months, yet she dismisses us as a small group. We were invited by the county to support this donation in 2018. We agreed to the mining for the park, not to have our promise broken without discussion. The county executive represents us, misrepresents us in the press and online. She claims the council won't work with her, but in this case, so many opposed her actions: the mayor, both councils, our most respected environmental groups, and countless citizens. She forced this through, ignoring zoning concerns and the MOU's issues. She threw Mayor Taylor under the bus with her press release, which was an absolute red herring, using disabled children as political prop and insulting families like mine. She apologized to a businessman, but not to us, the constituents she betrayed. I don't have an opinion yet on eliminating the county executive role, but this is a prime example of a broken system. Checks and balances failed, brute force prevailed. I ask you today to protect the original vision of Connolly Mill Park. Let's honor the county's promise. If we want citizens to continue to support the donation of land to the county, how can we expect them to do so when we face such betrayal when moving from one county executive to the next? To the county executive, I say, change course, keep the promise, stop the division. To the council, I ask, restore the funding taken from Connolly Mill. Ensure that the motorized vehicle legislation will protect this land until the county's original promise is fulfilled. Let's create the park we were promised, one accessible to all of Wacomiko. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
My name is James Saline, and I live in Wacomiko County. I'm here to voice my first, sorry, I'm here to voice my support for the development of Connolly Mill Park and my opposition to safari at the quarry and other intrusive uses at this site. Don't be fooled, this property is more than just a dirt site for the landfill. Much of this land is actually forest and includes creeks that feed into the Wacomiko River. Not only is this land the home for a variety of wildlife, but it presents a unique opportunity for us humans to enjoy green space, a highly valuable and needed resource for our mental and physical health. We can enjoy activities such as fishing, boating, hiking, disc golf, picnicking, birdwatching, and much more. To the county executive Julie Giordano, please change course, keep the promise of preserving this land for Connolly Mill Park with passive-use activities. Find common ground, restore the funding, establish a park master plan. To the county council, please restore the funding for Connolly Mill Park and help protect the county's land. And a side note, not related, I recommend everyone to not litter. And if you guys could, you know, take some time, join some litter pickup groups or whatever, do that, or go off on your own and do it. Thank you.
Hi, Holly Campbell, resident of Shadow Hills and Wacomiko County. Back again, I have nothing prepared to say today, but I'm just jumping in, I guess. I'd like to clear the air a little bit about how I feel personally about my community, Shadow Hills, having been, I'll say, kind of defamed in the public press. I don't know if that's the right word, but I have been a politically quiet person my whole life. None of you will ever find a political post on anything I've ever done, because I try to serve everybody in my own career in a fair manner with integrity behind everything I do. And to do that, I've always felt like it's not my role to be taking sides too strongly. Everybody has their opinion on that, that's mine. That being said, I feel like I got dragged into a situation politically here that I was never prepared for. And I think the citizens, if anybody watches these, should consider putting themselves in our shoes, because I woke up one day, had nothing to do with any of this, and suddenly we have a big issue on our hands. And I've learned a lot in the process, and in the process, I read the county charter and going through this whole thing with Connolly Mill Park, as things developed day by day, we would sit there and go, well, this can't be right. Certainly, the council will get this straight, there's been, you know, years, eight, six years or whatever, seven, eight years of conversation about the fact that we would deal with the mining and then there'd be a park, and really, nothing else would happen. And then here we are, these things just kept unraveling farther and farther, and we're going, you know, I had, I stood in my kitchen one night and I said to my, to my partner, I said, "Well, we don't live in a kingdom." You know, certainly, like, things can't be done this way, because we don't live in a kingdom. And then I read the charter, and I read about the executive office, and I read the powers, and, and I started paying attention to the fact that people kept coming to us and saying, "Well, so-and-so, this employee or this staff person or this head of a department can't say anything, because they'll get fired, or they're, they're in fear of losing their jobs." And I'm like, "Oh, crap, we live in a kingdom." You know, and, and that was a really, like, eye-opening moment for me, and I would read farther, and I would, you know, converse with people, and I'd contact you guys, and I'd come here, like, as a public person, this was my only outlet to find out more. I hope that the citizens take the time to start doing some of this. At this point, knowing what I know, I support the referendum to put this back out to public vote. I don't know all of the history of the executive issues, I have heard some horrific stories. I have personally now experienced a pretty horrific story, and I'm somebody who never wanted any part of it. So, I feel like the public should vote on this. I'll also say with 23 seconds left, social media didn't exist when this was voted on, and now that social media is being used as a platform to harass people and to incite hostility against your citizens, I think the people should vote again on whether or not the form of government has too much power concentrated in one person. I do believe if seven people in a room, if you can get this many people on the same page about something, that says something. There's too much power in the executive currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Any other public comments?
One, Siguris, again, with Wacomiko County. I, I just like, I have some questions concerning the library, transitioning, and wards and what have you. So, I'm wondering, did they indicate where the satellite might be located in the downtown area? No?
On the same property.
On the same property?
On the same property.
From my understanding-
Well, yeah, we can't get into back and forth, but go ahead. You recognize, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and it just seems to me, as I stated earlier, that why wasn't the Ward Museum considered the site to actually build the Performing Arts Center rather than the downtown area? They own that site. And I'm thinking that the hours that you probably would be presenting some of these performances, that the schools might not be in session, and you would have more of an opportunity to have sufficient parking in the area, it just seems as much of a pro to have it at the Ward Museum site as in the downtown area, and to allow the library to remain there, and it can still be developed into a state-of-the-art library, if that is your goal, but to get into the switch. You know, the thought occurs to me that the city once done the fire department down the street, sold it, and now is leasing it. And that is somewhat of a nonsensical thing to me. I'm still having some problems understanding that, and I would hope that you wouldn't end up in perhaps a nonsensical situation such as the city currently is residing in, paying to use the facility that they used to own and now they... So, I am just hoping that, I feel that 99.9% that if the Greater Salisbury Committee wants this, chances are it's a done deal, and that that 1% of the public, you'll have an opportunity to voice the concern, but I doubt that it's going to be that effective. But I'm just hoping that all of these things will be taken into consideration, that we will have a greater understanding of how this will function on our behalf before it is a done deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Siguris.
Good afternoon, Lisa Collier-Purnell, resident of Wacomiko County. I want to reiterate something that I heard earlier, and that is, you don't know what you don't know. So, when the charter was created, there were probably many residents who, residents, who didn't understand the full meaning of it and its impact. And I think that we certainly have a better understanding, given all that has happened recently. To the council, please do not allow any straw poll or Facebook posts or even any letter-writing campaigns sway you one way or the other, because I assure you, there are many of us in this room and throughout this county who are not even on Facebook, okay? Or who certainly don't have the luxury of taking advantage of any type poll. What we realize is that our void, our vote is our voice, and so, please give us that opportunity. I fully support the referendum to repeal the county executive position. Thank you again for your time and attention, but more importantly, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other public comments? We don't, we don't bring two up, sorry, we don't bring up repeats.
That's why I was understanding-
Yeah. Go ahead.
Was transportation a part of that discussion from the downtown area to-
Yes. It's part of consideration, yeah. Thank you, that's okay.
I think this is the first time a council meeting has lasted an entire gym workout of mine. I almost put a call in to see if anybody wants some Wendy's, since they've been sending here so long.
You missed the last one, you missed the last one, yeah.
Tanner Pizer, lifelong resident of Wacomiko County, look, short and sweet. Referendum is fine, but I'd like to see some kind of limit to where this can't be brought forth in another 25 years. I don't want to constantly being able to vote on if we want the county executive depending on who the council is. I'm also in favor of term limits as well, for both. I didn't have a chance to do my research. I don't think there's a county executive term limit, correct me if I'm wrong. No, I would be in favor of term limits for both. We need new blood, that's all I really have to say. Thank you very much, and-
You don't like this old blood?
I have a lot of respect for you guys.
Thank you. Any other public comments? That concludes public comments. Council comments?
I got one.
Yes, Joe?
There's some things said at the podium that I want to correct. I think Mr. McHugh from Pittsfield said that the referendum with the first county executive was done by signatures, incorrect, it was done by the council at the time. The only referendum that I recall being done by signatures was the collective bargaining with the police officers. Mr. White, you made a comment about us doing a work session later, banning motorsports. That's not what we're doing. We're doing a work session to try to find out how the council can control whether that, whether these work, whether these motorsports events are in the, in the county. And that's not just for the county to find out, the council to know about, it's for the citizens, because of this one neighborhood, what happened to that one neighborhood. I've got a lot of neighborhoods in my district, Shadow Hills being one of them, Nottingham Woods, you know, Mount Herman Manor, my gosh, Lake Pines, I can go on and on. I would really hate to see this happen to another one of these neighborhoods, what happened to this one, and the way they were treated. So, that's, that's kind of why we're going to have the work session after we break, hopefully for lunch, being we've been here since 8:30. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Joe, any other council comments?
The satellite location, the, Seth was saying, the director of libraries was saying that they're looking to find something around 3,000 square feet in the Salisbury area, and that they can fund it within their budget, within their library budget. So, I don't know if that helps with your question.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I want to say, I have to excuse my outbursts about the guns. I'm not a gun advocate. I know some people love guns, but I just want to say that, I'm bringing up again, communication. Communication's a key to anything, to avoid problems. And I think when we sit here and we have to find out things, either in the newspaper or somebody said was on Facebook, I don't put political things on Facebook, but I'm just saying, we have to hear things like that, and then the people come up here to the podium, want to know why we didn't know it. It's because you have to, to be, work together as a team for the betterment of our county. And this is not a, like you, someone said, kingdom. This is where you work with the people, because the county executive represents everybody in the county. We represent districts, but we also represent the county, and we have to respect each other's area that they live in. That's why I brought up Drustover Hill, because one of my things that had the blight, when they sit there applying for a grant, I want to make sure that I keep bringing it up, in case they forget it. I don't want them to forget it. Also, the library situation, I told the county executive weeks, maybe months ago, that the library, within the next five years, will be gone. And the reason why I said that is because of the plans, the master plan of the city of Salisbury. And the master plan of the city of Salisbury is to bring thousands of people living down there, and the parking is gone. Everything's gone. And I think that my, my vision is, yes, we're considered urban, but we lost that little town flavor. So, what, really, what do we offer people down there, like Berlin? I always use Berlin as an example, because you see people constantly walking and going to their shops. So, I think that we can't change something, but Ward Museum, to me, is the ideal place, just like we gave the teacher his ag thing, he teaches the kids about environmental issues. To me, that would be an ideal place to teach children about the environment. I think that when I looked up new designs for a library, we don't have access to the new design for a library. The water, they can have a glass, a glass where you can look at it, the water, enjoy the water, with relaxing, sitting in cushion chairs and relax. They also have a place where the library can make money, you know, because of weddings and things of that sort. I look at the vision, the positive things, I have to look at the positive things. Transportation, people can get anywhere they want to get to, believe it or not. I was, I didn't get my license, I was for- And this is just the beginning. And just like the attorney said, this is just the beginning. It might be two, three years down the road and just keep, keep, keep informed. And I think the council will keep the people informed too. And I'm glad to see everybody. Now I want to go to lunch.
Any other comments? Shane?
I've got one. Oh, actually, I got a couple of things. So Facebook was mentioned tonight a couple of times. So I found myself getting caught up in the Facebook drama too. Lesson learned for anybody out there that's on Facebook, just be careful, you know, try not to get caught up in the drama. It happens. So if I offended anybody, I'm sorry. Number two, I want to make sure the public knows that this body supports law enforcement. It's been suggested sometimes that we don't. Well, this, this past summer, they were under contract. You don't usually break a contract. We broke a contract with them, gave them raises that were needed. We fixed the contract that they asked us to fix in a non-contract year. That's usually unheard of. Here again, we have no problem with a cola. Everybody wants a cola. But when you come to us in the eleventh hour and you say, hey, sign this, I got to answer to you all and everybody watching at TV. I got to be to say why I signed it. Could we afford it? Did we have the money for it? And when I ask those questions of the executive's office, this is what I need. You know, I, I need an actuary. So it's, it's not that we're being difficult. It's not that we're trying to, you know, battle back and forth. We just need the information that we need. It's, it's your all's money. We're supposed to protect it the best we can. So that's what I try to do. And I'm done.
Jeff?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. I do want to thank everybody for coming out today, sharing your thoughts. We appreciate all the public input on both sides, on all sides of everything. It helps us through the decision process. There's seven people up here that have to make decisions on a lot of important things. And the more information we get, the more feedback we get, the more facts we get, the better. As we know, we're in the middle of the budget process, so I want to thank all the department heads that we've been meeting with to help us through that process, help us understand their needs and priorities. I think we got another session or two before we wrap it up. And to, to bring up this, I guess there's a poll on social media. I got sent a screenshot of it, whether the executive form of government, yes, no. It's showing that I voted on this poll, but I did not. And I can tell you why I did not, because I don't vote on online polls at all. The reason I don't vote on online polls at all is they're invalid. You don't know who's voting. In this case, do they live in the county? Is it a fake profile? I think that was brought up before. It's, it's, I think the statistic a little while ago was eighty-nine percent difference. Well, I just took a little poll here and the numbers are not nearly as great, but in what we heard today, there were seven people in favor of removing the executive form of government and three people not in favor of it. So not, you can swing the numbers any way you want. I don't hold political conversations on social media. I never have, I never will. They're unproductive, they're mean-spirited, and they're very divisive. If you want to have a conversation, I have a phone, six email accounts. I'm at Walmart every Saturday morning between six and seven. Catch me in the bread aisle. I'm really accessible, really accessible. Now, we might have a conversation where I might disagree with you, but that's the great thing about this country. I'm allowed to disagree with you, you're allowed to disagree with me, and we all move along. At the last meeting, Councilwoman Shields mentioned something about respect, and thank you very much for bringing that up. I love that word. Respect is earned. It's not awarded or given, and, and so is trust. We, we have to be able to trust the people that we're working with, trust the people that we're getting this information from. And that, if we don't have respect and trust, that hinders the process. I hope we can get there. That's all I'll say about that. And I, I want to, I'll close by emails. I want to say something about the emails we've been getting. Ever since this news broke, we've been getting a lot of emails. And some of them are, they're pretty ugly. So here's my little disclaimer about emails. I have a policy of response, an email gets a response until it involves false information and name-calling and things like that. Those emails will not get a response. So you can look at that like I'm not responding to you or I'm ignoring you. If you send me a mean-spirited email, you won't get a response. If you want to have an adult discussion, send me a proper email, pick up the phone and call me, send me a message on Facebook, however you want to do it. I just got a message that the location of the downtown library is to be determined, but I understand it's, I believe it's three thousand square feet, so that's a pretty sizable, sizable building. And I'll close by thanking Mrs. Hurley, Mrs. Ingold, and Mrs. Chetel, who's in the back row, for helping us work through the budget process. It's a lot. And my, my three-inch binder that was less than a third full when we got the budget is now full because of all the spreadsheets and all the emails and the updated information. So we literally have stuff this thick. So thank you all. That's all I got.
Any other comments? Josh?
I'd just say thank you all for being here. I know you probably wanted lunch three hours ago, but thank you all for bearing with us and hope you all have a great Memorial Day. It looks like it's going to be have really good weather.
Yeah, I've got one more thing. We have a person that likes to do some research, and I'll read this off real quick. County exec, I know we've had this conversation today about the county executive, the office, not the person. In two thousand twenty-three, county executive's office budget was five hundred and forty-four thousand. Two thousand twenty-four, county executive's budget was seven hundred and six thousand five hundred and seventy. The proposed budget for this year, and I hope this council's got the guts to take care of it, is eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. That's huge. It's a big jump in just a few short years when you really don't see any results. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'd like to recognize Mayor Jordan. Good to see you. Mayor Delmar, glad to have you here. Put out a personal challenge to you that you can't run a meeting for nine hours. I'd like you to try that.
We've got two councils.
I get it. You get it done faster than we do, right? But anyway, we'll put that challenge out there, see what you can come up with. A comment was made, and I wasn't sure if I picked up on it correctly, but it sounded to me like a quote was made in reference to the vote taken for the last time that the citizens of Wycomico County decided on whether they wanted executive legislative form of government. And I thought the numbers may have been off from what I heard. Just so your information, when this was voted on originally for the executive legislative form of government, the votes came out, ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-six individuals were for it, nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-four individuals were against it. So it was very, a very close race, just so you know that. I thought I'd heard a term up there about nineteen thousand and just wanted to make that correction if necessary.
People will say anything to get.
Outside of that, a comment was also made about voter out. And, you know, I believe in the ballot box. I don't believe in term limits because I think the public should be allowed to vote people out at any point in time and not just have some law state that you must leave office. So I, I believe in the ballot box. But in all honesty, when they made the comment about voter out, they really missed the point of what we're looking at in this day and age right now with what this county is dealing with. This isn't, what we're considering later on, isn't any type of a referendum on the current executive. It's more so being, taking into consideration an option for the public to be able to weigh in on the bigger picture, and that is the executive legislative form of government. So it's not only individual, it's the form of government that we, that we need to be concerned about. And this is really based on public input that I've received and that council members have received with concerns as to whether or not, this is the most efficient form of government. You know, it was, it was expressed earlier about how much time has been spent and how much energy, a lot has been spent. I say that, and I'm, I, I think I could say that for the executive and the legislative branch of government, hours and hours and hours. I'm talking about getting into office at eight o'clock and the next thing you know it's twelve o'clock and you've been on the phone for four solid hours. Not the best, not the best scenario. So you have to worry about the efficiency of this governance and the operations, and also, as Joe suggested, the cost. Is, is it warranted to, you know, to have the, the taxpayers of Wycomico County expending eight hundred thousand dollars for a separate executive form of government when we could possibly achieve the same amount with the same form of government that we had before, the same council form of government? They gave us Shorebird Stadium, they gave us the Henry Parker complex and was a very efficient form of government. So that being said, the purpose for this entire process is to give the public the option as to how they want to move forward. So we're not firing the executive, as some have suggested. We don't even have that right unless there's, if there's a violation of certain measures in the charter. We're just opening up the process for the public, for them to decide what they want and how they want to move forward. That being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn from legislation to go into open work session followed by a closed administrative session pursuant to general provisions, Article Section three dash one oh four, to discuss an internal audit project update.
Approved.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned. We are going to be taking a half-hour recess for lunch. Okay, we're reconvening as the Wycomico County Council, Legislative Session two thousand twenty-four eleven, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. The first item on the agenda for an open work session is the Humane Society of Wycomico County. We're glad to have you all here. Appreciate you staying so long and sitting through everything.
Exciting.
Blessings today, right?
Yeah. Wonderful. If you could, from, from my left to the right, state your name and your, you know, your purpose, your title, whatever you might choose.
Hugh Hanson, member of the Board of Directors of the Humane Society.
And I'm Tom Robinson. I'm president of the Board of Directors of the Humane Society of Wycomico County.
I'm really not, the executive director of the Humane Society.
And I'm Tina Davis. I'm the vice president of the Humane Society.
Great. Glad to have you here. Looks like you've got really good things going on, huh?
I think so.
We just got to figure out how we're going to get it done, right?
We're trying.
Yeah. Kim, I'll, we'll give you the floor, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So the reason we're here is we are requesting that the property noted as five thousand Goldman Lane be surplus and deeded over to the Humane Society for a future home of the Humane Society of Wycomico County.
Okay. I guess the, the idea here is that there were two, two different considerations. One was a, a purchase and the other one was a lease. So how did that develop as far? I'm trying to get so that we, we understand, but the public as well. So how, how was it trending and where did we go from one to the other and the reasoning behind that?
So when we had originally met with the county executive, they were kind of leaning towards us doing a long-term lease. That's the same situation that we are in now. This facility is going to be a lot more money for us. Our current building, I think, was a total of like six hundred thousand dollars, and we just don't feel that it makes good fiscal sense to put a five, six, seven million dollar building onto a piece of property that we don't own. We think that that would cause problems with fundraising. I don't think that people would want to donate a million dollars to us, knowing that in fifty years it would be up in the air as to whether or not we would still own the building. And, and that could be a big deal that, you know, even if we did two twenty-five-year leases, I think is what they were looking at, just like we have now, in fifty years, if our lease was not renewed, we would lose the building.
Isn't the lease agreement somehow connected to the service that you render to the county as far as the animal control?
The lease still has stipulations where it can be ended. So we could have ended our lease at twenty-five years on our own, but then we did have the right to renew it after twenty-five years. But after that, it would, it would come up for discussion all over again.
That didn't answer my question. Doesn't it have something to do with the service that you provide the county as far as animal control?
I don't know if the lease is tied to the service. We're contractually obligated to the county to provide animal control services in a hundred percent. And then also, we provide taking in any stray that's found in Wycomico County and caring for them. But I'm not sure if it's like specifically related, like leased that together.
So when was this done, this lease and this bill? I remember the building being.
Long time ago.
Well, I'm really old, so I mean, I can remember when.
Nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah, I can remember the conversations. I wasn't on the council then, but I can remember the conversations, you know, that that was sort of like in the agreement, you know, we'll lease you the building, you know, but we want this taken care of.
Which nothing would change whether you leased it to us? Well, you didn't lease us the building. You, you paid for part of it. And we, we paid for part of it. So with this, you know.
We still own the land.
You own the land. You own the land.
Yeah.
And we don't have the ability to expand on that current property.
Right.
How are we coming about as far as the determination on the price?
We have not discussed a, a price at all. We were hoping that you would surplus us and that would be the donation to the Humane Society, and then in turn, we would turn our current building over to you all to do as you pleased.
That's my next question. Someone asked me that the other day, what we've done with the old building. Sometimes we forget to ask that. So you're suggesting that it would sort of be a swap?
Yeah, exactly.
So what, what would we do with that old building? Somebody will want it for cats.
Foring Earth.
Right now, the building is valued at about eight hundred thousand dollars in the building itself. That's what it's on our books as, and that's just the building, not the property.
Okay. Yes, Joe? I think it's a good idea. I know you need a new, new facility and all that, but I'd like to, whether we, whether we lease it or give it, you know, gift it, I would like to see us some kind of way to protect ourselves that we have animal control for the county without us having to go out and contract or put, or go into the animal control business ourself, because you're better to handle it than we are.
Well, you don't have to worry about that, Joe. I mean, a hundred percent, we are happy to handle animal control, and we've actually put a lot of thought into that.
Things, things change. You know, people come and go. The next director might say, hey, we're not going to do this anymore, you know.
They're going to have me for a few more years.
If we're tied, well, I know, I know. I've been through a couple of directors, three directors, I think, since I've been here. So I think we, this is up to the council and something for us to think about, because this is just a work session, but we need to protect ourselves so the county doesn't have to get into the animal control business. And I know the sheriff's department don't want to get into it because we've tried to pawn that on them before, and that hadn't worked. So anyway.
I a hundred percent agree. I mean, you're more than welcome to put any of those stipulations in there. We actually put great thought into the animal control section of this building because I feel like with our current building, the public doesn't have a place to go when they have an animal control issue. I mean, they're walking into our lobby and then having to mingle through our back hallways to get to basically a closet with two animal control desks in it. And I think that that should be a place where the community can come if they have a problem and sit down in an office and speak to an animal control officer without, you know, being part of the shelter aspect of it. We actually did put a lot of thought into that.
Well, I know personally, you know, with the work that you're doing and, you know, your advocacy for, for such a great cause, right? I think it's the least the county can do is to try to arrange for any type of amicable relationship where we can help you guys out. I mean, the amount of time that you spend just to, you know, on your own is incredible and it's such a benefit to the county. So this is, to me, it's a drop in the bucket to make this happen and say, you know, whatever you think's going to work for you, I'm on board with that, a hundred percent. Anybody else? I think everyone agrees. They're all okay.
Good. What are we agreeing to, though?
Well, we're agreeing to move forward with it. And as far as how, I guess, you know, you're, you're talking about a purchase.
I'm talking about.
When I say a purchase, I say a purchase, but I mean, not a lease. You're talking about a swap or a swap, a deed transfer. I get it. And I believe that the executive is in, in order with that as well.
Yes.
Yes.
So there you go, Joe. That's it. That's what it is. And everybody's good, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I don't know the processes from here on out. I don't know how far along you are with the executive office, but when it comes back to. That's what it is. And everybody's good, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I don't know the processes from here on out. I don't know how far along you are with the executive office, but when it comes back to the table, we're looking forward to it, we're looking forward to it and seeing you again, right?
Bonkey has something to say.
Yes, where? Bonkey, sure, sure, Bon.
Sir, Council President. Bonkey Luthman, Director of Administration. I just wanted to say, when we met with them, we we also talked about a couple other protections, just so you know. One would be if they didn't break ground in X amount of years, it would revert back, you know?
Okay.
So that adds a protection. And also, the other one would be if they, at some point in the future, wanted to sell or get out of, you know, doing the business they do, we would have a first rate of refusal to also get it back.
Yep.
So those were two protections we thought were common sense, that they were open to.
What about the the current building, Bonkey? Any any thoughts on it?
We'd have to do a feasibility study or, you know, RFP, whatever. But yeah, we don't have anything in mind, that's for sure right now, so.
Okay. All right. Yes, Joe.
Hey, that was in the glide path for the airport, for one of the runways. Is it still there?
The the current location, yeah, that's an FAA.
Yeah, I mean, have you approached the FAA? Is this going to be suitable to go into that glide path?
Oh, the the next location where the boot camp was, that is not in FFA control area. Their current location, it is.
Okay, all right, okay.
That's a good question, yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Bonkey, really appreciate that. All right, again, thanks, and we look forward to seeing you here.
Thank you.
Two weeks.
Okay.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Next item we have on the agenda is the proposed regulations on outdoor motorsports events on county property. Glad to have Mr. Wilber here and Mr. Miller. How are you, gentlemen?
Very well, thank you.
Good.
Okay, so I think the, we have the draft, and the discussion was going to be about the language, particularly in paragraph three of that. Steve and I have talked, and one possibility is, on county property, do we want to include that as events in parks or exclude parks from this approval process? I'm just throwing that out there, council consideration.
Mr. Miller, your preferences are important, too. So we certainly would be fashioning the legislation, but we'd want to make sure it does not conflict with anything that you do and you need to get done, okay? So as far as Mr. Wilber's concerned, I mean, I think we could defer to you as what is easiest for you to to handle.
Sure, thank you very much. Yeah, I might offer, I don't have a lot to offer here, but I think maybe a couple suggestions, because I guess the way I read this, it could potentially impact longstanding events and existing events, and I understand that's not necessarily the intent here, but um-
Excuse me, what events did you say?
Um, the county fair would be one that comes to mind, where you have tractor pulls and things of that nature. You have little leagues, which are county-owned properties, which might have a parade, which has fire trucks and things of that nature. I know it's talked about with Bike Week at the stadium. So there's a lot of those types of events where those potentially could be impacted. And and I don't know that it threatens the events themselves, but it just adds layers of of things that would need to get done. So a suggestion that that I might offer, just to, for consideration or discussion, would be, in a lot of the cases that that we could think of where where other events might be impacted, could there be a carve-out or some language where there's exclusions for events or facilities that the council's already approved? So for example, little league agreements have already come to the council, you've approved it, there's a there's a process in there for events. Shorebird Stadium or Purdue Stadium, we have an agreement in place. We're going to be coming to you probably later this summer in a multi-year agreement for the county fair. So those events where the council already approves them, could those maybe be excluded here so that we're not, you know, just creating extra work for everybody?
You know, you had issues at the county fair with the motorcycles and the horses a few years ago. The first time you had Bike Week, and then the next year, I think the county actually paid to have some lady's horses boarded or something, didn't she? And then we moved Bike Week to the stadium, which was the proper place for it. And the other problem with Bike Week at the county fair, and we're not trying, I want this real real clear, because I've seen some of the things said online, and, you know, we're not trying to ban any events. This isn't the purpose of this, okay? This is the purpose of protection of neighborhoods. So let me clear that up. But, you know, one of the problems that Bike Week had at the county fair is they were shuttling all the bikes out on 346 right there on that corner, and the neighbors were all complaining, so that's why it got moved. So if we go carving stuff out, and I understand about parades for little leagues, I mean, you know, just bring up the children and go to everybody's right away, right, you know? But if we're going to go carving things out, we're defeating the purpose of what we're doing. So it's not that big a deal of what we're trying to do here, you know? It's protection of neighborhoods. It's to come to the council so the public will know. It's not, I don't know how we would, Laura can fill us in on how we would take the vote, whether we could do the vote over the phone so it won't hold you up, you know what I'm saying? As far as anything you want to do, have to wait two weeks for a meeting or whatever. But it's more about announcing it.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, and I I don't take it that way, and I understand what you're saying. I think I think in the case of the county fair, for example, if we were to come here, which is our intent at some point, to get a multi-year agreement approved, to me, if that's already approved, do you need to get it re-approved and re-approved and that kind of thing? It, to me, that would just be duplication of of work. And I think the intent from my seat, and I understand what you're saying, the intent from my seat would be to keep events happening that are appropriate events, keep them happening, keep them moving as quickly as we can, and I don't have a problem with approvals or anything like that. I'm just trying to avoid the unintended consequences of what might happen. So that was a suggestion as far as where where agreements already exist for events or facilities that possibly carve those out potentially. The other possible suggestion would be for annual events that are ongoing events, if you come the first year and get that approval, can that approval just carry forward, or do you have to do that every single year? And that's, again, it's a it's a question for you all to consider, just in interest of saving time and-
Are you suggesting we carve out what's already been approved for Conley Mill? Because it's, it goes until August, doesn't it, or something like that?
I think he's talking about projects that have already been in the pipeline for several years, and you'd like to contend.
Well, I would, yeah, I'll let, yeah, go ahead.
Is it parks or all-county property? If it's parks, I think that's one thing. If it's all-county property-
It could be all-county property, because we don't know where all-county property's going to be. Conley Mill Park isn't really a park yet.
No, certainly isn't, no.
So I know you've got your schedule laid out pretty well to avoid carving things out and still not hinder your process in January. Could we get a list of events and just approve them at that time? Would that work?
I guess it it depends. The question was asked at the last meeting as as far as what you're approving. If you're approving a list of event concepts, I think that would be fairly easy, that we could come and say, hey, here's here's the events, here's the proposed dates, concepts. If you're asking for the actual contracts and that level of scrutiny, those don't all, unfortunately, fall together, where we can just come and give them as a batch. Those are spread out, and that would take more consistent type of approvals and whatnot. So that's that's why I was suggesting those multi-years, maybe you could avoid that. But we could do it any any way you you want. I mean, if it's just the concept, that would be fairly easy. We we could come at a certain point in the year and say, hey, here's what here's what we're planning.
If you have something pop up during the year, you could come back.
You could, yeah.
Something new, sure.
Right, yeah. It sounds to me like the goal is to, like Joe said, we don't want any negative impact on the neighborhoods from a new event. The events that we already have, Bike Week and the tractor pull, they're annual events. We already know what that impact is, and there, those contracts probably don't change much year to year, right?
Typically not, no.
Yeah. Girls have car shows at the, at the Winter Place, too.
Right. And one one other, this, if I might ask a question, is that appropriate?
Sure, open floor.
So I don't know, and I defer to Mr. Wilber or others, when it talks about use of vehicles and it mentions side-by-sides, one of the questions that we had was how that's interpreted, because you take, for example, the Girl Softball World Series or the Beer Festival, we're using utility vehicles to cart around ice or equipment or supplies and things of that nature. And to me, I don't, I don't want to speak for anybody, but it doesn't sound like the intent here is to prevent our staff from moving around.
No.
No.
But but could it be interpreted that way? And does that stuff need to be clarified is is a question I had.
It's a good idea, because, I mean, this council knows that, but the next council might not.
Yeah.
So it might not be a bad idea to figure out how to clean it up.
Would we qualify that by saying unless it's unless it's county employees?
Yeah. County vehicle.
County vehicle.
Yeah, or volunteer, and a lot of times we'll rent those, so you maybe use for the purposes, because it might be county employees or volunteers that are helping run the event.
County use.
Yeah, something like-
County use, yes.
Girl softball event, you've got-
I mean, this says that they have to approve the use of any county property for a motor vehicle event.
Yeah, and I guess that's, if that's-
And I mean, a softball event is not a motor vehicle.
Right, so if that if that is how that would be interpreted, then that would not apply.
That's what it says.
We need to like define what that is, a motor vehicle event is.
Side track.
A vehicle with a motor.
Man, it says a motor vehicle event.
You're right.
I don't think a little league using a a golf cart at a little league event to transport, it doesn't, doesn't meet the definition, it doesn't apply to it.
I think that answers that. Good, thank you. Any other questions, Steve?
Um, yeah, I guess I guess the big question would be, the one I referenced earlier, is clarification on whether it's just the concepts and dates that are being approved or contracts, because that would change our flow of work and how we would approach this. So understanding that would be helpful.
If I may, I don't even know if you really need to be specific on the exact date, because I understand that rain checks happen, things happen, but if we have a concept of an idea of what's going to happen that year, maybe, that way we have an idea of what's going to happen.
You want to know where it's going to be in relation to neighborhoods.
Where and what? I don't know, like, I don't know if that's just me, maybe it's, you know, I I don't foresee needing to know exactly what weekend that will be, at least to to approve it.
And one, I'm sorry. One one other-
What will work best for you?
I'm sorry?
What will work best for you?
Um, I think if if it fulfills the spirit of what you're looking for, I think coming once a year to with a list to say, these, these are the events that we know of that are going to happen, I think that would be fair fairly easy, and we could move that along. I also, I, again, I'll do, if we're coming anyway, it probably doesn't matter with those other events, but those ones that are already approved, multi-year, but it's not a big deal to include them on a list if that's how we do that, so.
But the once a year don't count if something else pops up in the meantime, a pop-up event.
A new event would have to come up.
Or the pop-up event, whatever they call it.
Yeah. When this is all settled, what is the likelihood that we can at least open the area up so that's at least walkable, you know, for the public?
Talking Conley Mill?
Yeah. I mean, I I don't know if we can do that, but I I-
I mean, I I suppose you could. I would not recommend it, so so Pirate's Wharf is a good example. We owned that for a long time. We did not necessarily want the public out there till it was ready to be open to the public, just for safety reasons, for other reasons. So until you have infrastru-, if if it indeed someday becomes a park, I wouldn't open it to the public until it's ready, so you have a place to park, you have a place to go, there's, I I think that's problematic, in my opinion.
And water pit could be very dangerous.
Yeah, you've got, you've got features out there, and some really neat features, but but until it's ready, I don't know that I would recommend.
What kind of, what kind of actions are you going to take to protect that property from people trespassing now? I mean, we've got people on dirt bikes and four-wheelers going in there, and it's like when the helicopter flew over Cove Road and showed the beach, you know, all of a sudden, everybody knew about it. Now everybody knows about Conley Mill. So I presume, and we've not even got good into summer, but I presume you're going to see a lot more activity out there. You know, I made this comment when we took that property, that probably the biggest expense we were going to have is we were going to have to fence it in at some point in time. You know, it costs millions or a million dollars or more to do that, but I mean, what what are we going to do to protect not only the neighborhood, but the people that would be trespassing? They could run a dirt bike into a 60-foot excavated hole way up there, you know, water hole, whatever.
Yeah, I would honestly defer to others, because at this point, it's not under the parks.
Yeah, I think that's a public works issue now.
You just said what, not putting you on the spot here, it's not under parks, it's not under tourism, either.
Not at this point.
But that's what it was touted as, and that's not your fault.
Well, the reason why I bring that is because there's a lot of state land that is not a park, but it's state land, like, you can walk on it, look at birds, you can jog on it, you can hunt on it.
Yeah, I've got a state forest near me.
Yeah, exactly. There's state forests everywhere. There's 60,000 acres, I think, near 60, and 60-foot road, a lot of, a lot of acreage. I don't know if that's not even, maybe not even classified as a park, you know, it's just like public, public ground, conservation area or something.
Public, yeah. But the trouble with this park, James, is we've got that hole there, and on on Powellville Road, we've had two or three people drowned in those pond, they call it three ponds, and I know of two people that drowned there, because it was just open and people could get on the property. And that's, that's what I worry about out here to this this area.
To address your concern, Joe, I think we could send a letter to administration just saying, hey, could you give us an idea of what type of measures are being taken, are taking place to to secure that property?
You get a long, hot summer, you're going to have kids going in there.
They've been doing it already.
Yeah. We all right with that?
No. Oh, see, they're already in there, so.
All right, if we, if you don't mind, let's just go ahead, we get that letter out to them.
Mr. Kennedy, to that note, I guess, we still have to, it would be nice to understand how much longer we have as far as how much fill is left in that, how much soil is left on that space. Since Weston's left, we haven't had a good estimate of that.
Could you include that as well, Mr. Hurley?
Okay.
That's a good point. I believe in that. Any other comments? Any other things you'd like to add, Mr. Wilber or Mr. Miller?
No.
Um, the one other question, would boat events qualify under the definition, I guess, of motor vehicle events? That was, I wouldn't think so, but I didn't know.
I don't think so.
Okay.
With boat events, you would be having would be on the river, right?
It would be, yeah.
No, we don't have, we don't have a speed, we're going to put speedboats in the, um, I guess they can have an event with trolling motors, right? I guess they can have an event with trolling motors, right?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
I wouldn't say so.
Yeah, it's not locking down that hard.
All right. Very good, thank you.
Okay, is that it?
I think so.
Any other questions? No? All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the resolution to amend the charter of Wycomico County as far as its, its governance structure. I'm assuming everybody's looked at the brief book and reviewed the resolution as prepared?
I saw it on Shane's Facebook.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, first of all?
No.
In reference to the context of the resolution and the revision, the revision of the charter as it was done?
I'm just gonna say that I'm just not for it. I have no, no problem with people having a vote on it, we had a vote on it 20 years ago, but, you know, if we've got a problem with the executive, we'll vote for a new one in, in, in just two years. And I think the ballot box in that aspect should, should be the deciding factor on who runs the county, and, and I think with an executive form of government, it's nice to be able to choose the person who runs the internal aspects of the county, but with a commissioner form of government, we have a, a county manager, like, they don't have to say hi to you, they don't have to come to an event and, and see what your issues are, they don't have to do any of that, because they just have to make the, the four commissioners happy, that's it, they just have to make four of them happy. So, in that aspect, I like the executive form of government, because it gives, in my opinion, it gives more choices, more, more of a voice for the people to be able to pick who runs their county. And, and if they decide, if this thing goes and we vote on it in, in November as a, as a county, and we don't have it anymore, then, then it's, it's, it would be disheartening for me, because, now, regardless of who the executive is, you know, that executive you can hold accountable, you, you can't really, the only people that can hold your county administrator accountable would be the council members. So that would be why I'm going to not go along with this.
I think that sometimes that's part of the problem, is that we, there's a lack of true accountability. The only different side of that is when you're dealing with a seven-member council, and we do everything in public, so there's always accountability, because every decision that's made has to be made here, and it's like, I can't specialize and, and try to influence the council, the council administrator to do one thing or another, because as a body, we all have to do it, even the president of the council doesn't have that authority.
Well, you can still have closed administrative sessions, and we do that here, and we can still have a closed sessions.
Sure.
I mean, it's still possible, but you're right, it's all recorded.
Yeah, yeah, but nothing gets actually passed, and you don't see the actual laws put in place until it's done in public.
Right.
But any, either way, was there anything that you wanted to point out, Mr. Benson, as far as what you think the council should be aware of?
No, I mean, the, the draft is, includes, basically, this language that's in here is substantially similar, it's not identical, but it's substantially similar to the charter prior to the executive form of government being enacted. So we basically re-engineered the charter to use the language that was in existence prior to the executive going in. There are some changes, but the changes by and large are to update language by way of example. The current charter refers to the county, the Court of Appeals, Court of Appeals has changed its name, it's now the Supreme Court of Maryland, so the charter now is changed in the sense that it no longer says Court of Appeals, it says the Supreme Court of Maryland. Other than that, there are no particularly substantive changes that have been made, so this would basically revert back to the council form that was in existence in, prior to the executive being...
And Wycomico would still be a charter form of government?
It's not changing it from a charter government, it's simply removing the executive.
Right, because some people felt that we'd be, we'd...
The county, Wycomico County was a charter form of government in 2000, or 2006, whenever the vote, the voters voted on it, and it would remain a charter form of government, it simply would revert back to a council charter form of government, as opposed to a county executive charter form of government.
Thank you. The timeline, if we want to, if we choose to go forward today, the timeline would probably be the next meeting, June 4th, we would have a public hearing, not required, but we feel that we should have a public hearing, and then at that point in time, probably the second meeting in June is when we could take a vote on it, if that's, if that suffices.
You know, I have another question. You know, I, I heard term limits being brought up today, and I heard you weren't a, a fan of it, and I'm not saying anything about you, Joe, because you've been on here a while.
I am now.
But I, for one, am not opposed to introducing that and allowing the voters to be able to vote on some sort of a limit, even like if the executive gets voted down, I mean, we still, you know, it'd be nice to see some sort of term, maybe not one year, maybe three years of term limits. I mean, that way, like, we see it at the national level, we, we get career politicians, I'm not calling anyone here a career politician, but, but I, I would like to see that option as a, somebody that would like to see term limits across the board, we do...
It may feel different than that in about 12 years.
Well, that's if I'm here, Joe. But they have term limits in Frederick County, they have term limits on executive and councilmen, and I don't, I just don't see that being a problem.
The only comment I would make is that it, there can be a resolution to amend the charter to add term limits. I would suggest that it's probably not best to try to put a term limits change in this same one, because you're mixing apples and oranges, and there may be people who would be inclined to vote for one and not the other. So if you want to do a second resolution that's solely on term limits, you could have two different resolutions that the voters vote on.
For this year.
For this year.
So we could, I mean, I don't know, is there any entertainment for that? Am I the only one?
I don't entertain it.
Huh?
I don't entertain it, because I'm going to be here 20 years.
Yeah, I, I think the voters should be, if, if there's a problem, the voters vote a man.
Well, this is my question, it's the same...
I may change my mind, I may stay...
Well, hold on now, listen, we're giving the voters the option to vote off the executive branch, right, but why can't we give them an option to say yes to term limits? We're not gonna let them have that opportunity?
I think, I think the...
Don't, don't we want to give the vote back to the people?
I tell you what...
I think the executive form of government discussion has been had for over a dozen years, the term limits discussion just got brought up today.
Well, I mean, term limits have been a, I know it's been a discussion that I brought up today, because, I mean, I just, you know, I was hearing about it, but, you know, this has been a discussion nationally.
James, when people heard about us putting, I'm being realist now.
Okay.
When people heard about us putting the executive issue on the ballot, it was said, well, we have some ammunition, we're gonna put term limits. See, you got to be careful, again, what's being said. What is the reason for even starting to talk about term limits? You never heard about term limits until we just start discussing the executive of changing it back to where it used to be. You made a comment that, when I first came on board here behind this desk, the county executive was sitting here beside me, and we would talk, chit-chat, all of a sudden, when we disagreed with her on issues, you don't, didn't see her no more, sitting behind this desk. In order for people to work together, you have to be, see each other. We shouldn't have to hear it from other people, or we shouldn't have, this is my way or nobody's, I've always said that. And the people that look at this on TV and out here in the audience, they see that like we're not getting along. We get along, I don't agree, always agree with you, but we get along, you know, but the thing of it is, the county executive, whoever the person may be, has to work with, with the council, and work with the council before our meetings, so we aren't, aren't at our dirty laundry in public. Now, and that's, that's how, this is how it's been happening. It looks like we're against her, and she's against us, but if you come together and face each other's oppositions and own it out, so by the time you get to this meeting, we'll be maybe on one page, or we have a way of saying, well, I don't agree with this because, or I agree with this because, but we don't do that, not with this county executive. We have to hear it about on Facebook, playing victim, like we're against her, I'm not against her, because she hasn't done a thing to me. What we have to do, we have to realize what the public says, and the public is getting vibes that we're not getting along, because we don't either like the county executive or she's not informing people. These folks shouldn't have to come here every meeting to discuss what happened to them, but how about other neighborhoods, it might, something might have happened to them, because we don't communicate, and she has to communicate with us, she's not, she never comes to the meetings anymore to see what's going on. So how you gonna know how people feel, not sitting by the TV, but actually looking at the people face to face? Be a woman or a man and face your opposition, be, be here bodily, because what's I think we pay her to be here bodily. I expect to see her sometime in this meeting, sitting here, listening to these people like we listen to them.
Careful what you're doing.
And not looking at it on television.
Can we, with the, with what we have on the table, though, with this current work session, how the timeline would work out would be, again, a public hearing at our next meeting, and then June 18th, we could take the vote. Everybody okay with that? All right with that?
I got something.
I'm trying to wrap it up.
Oh, I know, but I have something I want to say. I mean, we've caught a lot of grief over this, and I want to make a statement.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Before you do, Joe, we're straight with this, and this is how we move forward, Ms. Hurley, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I'll be short. You know, we've caught a lot of grief in the past few days, mainly due to social media about the decision to put this on the agenda to ask citizens to vote on it. Now, we had somebody at the, at the podium today that said that, that was, there were signatures taken back when we did this, and that's incorrect, this was done by the prior county, by a prior county council. You know, Wycomico County operated from 1867 to 2006 without a county executive, and probably some bumps in the road, no doubt, I wasn't around for a lot of that, but, you know, it got along well. So, the real reason the county executive came into, into being is people got upset with what the council was doing at the time, and they couldn't get rid of the council, they knew that, I mean, they could vote other council members in, but, you know, that wasn't working, or it hadn't worked for them. They'd had a super-large increase in property taxes, that initiated the revenue cap, things still didn't seem to be working, so it was initiated that they would do a county executive, elect somebody to put in charge. Well, we're on our third county executive, I guess you could say four with one appointed, and, yeah, three and a half. So with, and I've been there for all of them, okay? And I can tell you, it's been a rocky road dealing with a county executive and a council, because, God bless all of them, you know, they all ran, they all won, you know, they were basically all nice people, but if they didn't get their way, if things didn't go their way, that's when the troubles started, and it, it was that way with just about everybody, I will say that. Now, I got a long list that has been supplied to me by somebody that's kept track of this all these years, and I'll call them infractions or disagreements, things that were done against the charter, that's, that's the main thing, is, I don't think these folks, when they get elected, they look at this charter and think that that's something they should have to abide by. I really don't, because that's been our biggest source of contention, is, you know, we went through it today, you know. Now, I understand the FOP agreement is a stretched-out event that's hard to come up, get everything right, and, but, you know, basically, you could say that's kind of a charter violation, because it did not ever get done the way it was supposed to be done. You know, the, you, you, there was just so many, I'm not even gonna go into them, because there's about two pages of them, but the history shows, and if you, if you go online and look up other charter counties that have county executives, you will also see that there's always contention between a, a council and a county executive, and possibly some of them get along most of the time, but there's always things that, that's going on in the background. I think that a seven-member council, you know, right now, we can't, if somebody calls me and wants a pothole fixed, okay, we'll use a pothole as an example, because that's something that we deal with all the time. I can't pick up the phone and call the Department of Public Works and say, hey, go fix that pothole. If I did that, I'm breaking the charter, okay? So I've got, I've got to go through the county executive's office, and then they take care of it, and thank goodness, so far we have. But I'll go back about to 2008, when one neighborhood was trying to get their speed limit lowered on a street. We begged and pleaded for about four or five weeks, no, months, it was months, four or five months, to get this done, and, you know, the county executive's office kept saying, no, we're not lowering that speed limit, nope, we're not gonna do it, okay? They wanted it lowered from 40 to 30, and I'll tell you what street it was, the road it was, it was Outland Road. So one day in this meeting, I brought it up, and somebody from one of the news media outlets, I think it was the Daily, it was the Daily Times, asked me about it, and I told him, well, he went and interviewed the HOA president, and made the Sunday paper. Well, guess what happened Monday? The county went out and lowered the speed limit, you know, after begging for all the, you know, if it had been for, if it had been a seven-member council member with that issue, four members could have agreed to do it or not do it, and it would have either gotten done, or it would have been over with. But that's, that's one example of things that, that happen with a county executive. County executive's office is a very, very powerful position, can, a lot of decisions, like John said a while ago, can be made without the public knowing about it, and that's the reason I'm supporting putting this on a referendum.
Thank you for the time.
Okay.
I was short, wasn't I? Thanks. Entertained motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.